Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. It's going to be a long night, and we've already had one little glitch as our sign-up sheet was for the wrong public hearing. So if you'd like to sign up, please sign up to the corrected Boathouse Public Hearing and then the Old Mystic Fire District trailer following that public hearing. Before we get underway, I would like to introduce to you the new town planner, Clifton Eiler, right here. Yeah. Thank you for that warm welcome. Very deserving. And I'd also like to thank the staff of the Planning Department who has helped out Clifton the past two weeks of Susan Cullen, and we had Candy Palmer helping, Adriana Bancroft, I believe, and even Gail Phoenix while on vacation from Florida was chipping in. I'd also like to thank the last meeting, unfortunately, of Fred Dykman. He will be leaving this after this evening, so thank you so much, Fred, for all you've done for this town. Especially for the Regulation Rewrite Committee. You have been a stalwart member of that. Thank you. That is it for tonight. It's a busy night. We have a lot to plow through before we get to the headline event of the Boathouse, so please bear with us while we get through our administrative review and, is there old business? Just administrative reviews. So with that, this evening we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway with Alternates, Gary Belkey, Marge Salinger, and Andy Meek. Clifton, it's over to you.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. Happy to be here. So I guess, do you want to, do we start with going through the first couple items here, which is appoint alternates, minutes, et cetera?
Actually, I made a goof. We should look, go to the minutes first before I turn it over to you.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that what you were trying to tell me, Ryan?
I won't bog stuff this evening. So the minutes of, then we'll get to you, Clifton. Number 1724 from April 26th, which was a virtual meeting, and we were missing a couple of items. There was never a proper adjournment, which I goofed, but we did end it at 8:12, which we--
So that we ended it now?
Yes.
So does Mr. Chairman make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1724? Is that right?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Does Mr. Chairman make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1726, May 16, 2023, is so?
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Oh, Fred, you got that one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Does Mr. Chairman make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 177, May 14, 2023, is so?
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck. All righty. Now, Clifton, I can hand it to you.
Thank you. So no staff reports, no commission reports, and no zoning enforcement violations, so first thing is administrative review. First item is PZ 2115 CAM, 19 Chippitoug Trail, presentation and potential vote on stipulation for coastal area management approval for the property located at 19 Chippitoug Trail, Mystic, map block, map block lots 176-5-5A, Zone RA 20. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Clifton. For this administrative review, Fred Dykman is going to recuse himself, and I'm going to seat Andy Meek. Is there a presenter here for this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good evening, members of the Commission. My name is John Chase, and I represent the applicants in this matter, Rufus Allen and Roy Bollender, who are here tonight, and also the Masons Island Company as co-owners of the parcel at 19 Chippitoug Trail. As you are aware by virtue of your executive session, I'm sure this matter has been before the Commission previously, and the Commission also had an opportunity at that time to review plans that were drawn by Clint Brown, my client's former engineer, who's since retired. With me tonight is Clint's successor, Susan Marquardt, to describe to you a set of revised plans that followed through from comments that were provided earlier by the former town planner, also the town engineer, and then most recently by Candace Palmer in respect to a couple of small points. Again, Ms. Marquardt will present those plans with your permission, and upon that, I have nothing further to say myself other than thank you again for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Oops. HDMI out, or do you need an adapter?
I think I should plug in.
Sometimes it'll take a second to, um, yeah. Let's give me a second.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Susan Marquardt, professional engineer with LaRaro Engineering. So the plan we have before you tonight, just a little recap, the CAM application was previously submitted in 2021, and since then, we had some comments from the Planning Department, the town engineer, and then, most recently, from Candy Palmer. So I'll just quickly go through the comments that we had received and how we addressed them. From the Planning Department, one of the comments was that the lot area that was shown on the plan was the lot area to the mean high water, and he mentioned that it should be to the coastal jurisdiction line. So the lot area has been revised on the plan, and it does meet the zoning requirements for lot area. The other comment that he had was minimum side setbacks in the RA 20 district is 10 feet, but the Masons Island Company side setback is 20 feet. And he was saying that it's not a zoning issue, just wanted to point it out that we have both on the plan. So the plan now shows the 20-foot setback, and the 10 and the 20, and the house meets both of those setbacks. The town engineer's comments was that the plans need to be signed and stamped by a Connecticut licensed PE. They have been stamped and signed by a licensed PE. Second comment was provide note that owner required to acquire approval for septic system design through the regional sanitarium, which is Ledge Light. These plans had been submitted to Ledge Light Health District back in December of 2020 and received approval from Ledge Light Health District. His comment number three was survey note number one indicated that the boundary determination as dependent re-survey, therefore a map reference should be provided. So we added the map reference onto the plan and submitted a copy of that map that it was referencing. Comment number four was to provide proposed spot grades in the area of the driveway apron. So the revised plan shows existing and proposed spot grades in the area of the driveway apron, and we provided spot grades on the north side of the house and everything, just to make sure that stormwater is clearly staying on the property and go into the rear of the property. Comment number five was note the areas of proposed grass in our disturbed areas to be seeded and provide a seed type. So we added, in the ENS notes, we added a note to that effect and specified the seed type. His comment number six was indicate slope treatment and maintenance plan for the proposed slopes in excess of 3:1. So we added to the plan, it shows that erosion control blanket will be added in areas of 3:1, slopes or steeper. We added notes in the ENS notes for maintenance of the erosion control blanket, and a detail was added to the plans. Comment number seven was the rain garden should include the following, a cross-section, the depths of the soil matrix, the calculations for the soil matrix media area, add a stone pad at the outlet pipe, and the permeability calculations. All that information has been provided. There's a detail on the plans that goes through everything he had asked for, and calculations for the size of the rain garden were added. And the last comment from the town engineer was silt fence and hay bales should be installed up gradient of the rain garden to prevent migration, and that has been added to the plan as well. And then, in March of 2023, Candy Palmer had reviewed it and had one comment, the same comment that the town planner had had about the side yard setback, so we just made sure that now we reflect the 10-foot and the 20-foot setback, and the house does meet both of those. Her other comment was just some clarification on the height requirement. So we just made sure that we note there are two height restrictions for this property. One is because it is within 150 feet of the main high water, and the other is the zoning max height requirement. And the third comment she had was that the plans should also note the bulk maximum height requirement of 30 feet for the RA 20 zone, and so that was addressed in that as well. So those are all the revisions that we made to the plan since the original plan that was submitted.
Thank you. Now, there's some questions from the board. Chuck?
Could you tell us how steep the slope is on the east side of the house?
The slope behind the house and to the east, right, behind is the east, is three--
Is it the house, which is out?
Right.
Discretion of the side?
Yeah, I don't know if we call that out. Let me try to zoom in. Looks like in some of the areas, it's 3:1. In that corner, it's probably 2:1, right behind the house.
How is that going to be protected from wave action from Fisher's house?
So we have an erosion control blanket that will cover that, but the location that that is in is outside of the, let's see, let me make sure. It is outside of the VE zone. It is in the AE elevation 11 zone, but that is not within the limo for the wave action.
You don't think it'll be subject to any wave action at all?
By the flood maps, no.
And you think the flood map is adequate for wave action?
That's the best information that we have.
What's the question? Please, Chuck.
You think the erosion mat is adequate for wave action?
Well, like I said, that area is outside of any area that would have wave action.
It'll obviously be subject to wave action. If in a 100-year storm, it comes up to the limit that's shown there, it's obviously going to be subject to wave action.
Yeah, the erosion control mat should be sufficient, and there's also, there's some ledge there as well that will be natural protection. And the house will be designed for the FEMA regulations.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think, I think you should take another look at that, but, you know, it, some form of interlocking stone or, or something in addition on the 2:1 slope that is obviously going to be subject to wave action is, I think, much more appropriate than. What is the treatment of that slope? Just, just the mat?
Right, mat, and then it'll be seeded.
Does the mat stay there permanently?
Yes.
And it, it's in perpetuity? The mat exists in perpetuity?
The mat will be put down, and then they'll be seeded and so forth to, then they'll stabilize it.
And then the mat becomes invisible, correct?
Right.
Excuse me, for the layman, what is the mat?
The erosion control mat.
I don't use it like a fix.
I don't think there's a detail on the plan, is there?
There is a detail, yes.
Okay, what sheet is on it?
I don't see a detail.
Actually--
I don't see that.
Yeah, there may not be a detail.
Typically, what is an erosion control mat?
There's a variety of treatments. They can describe what they're proposing.
Right, there's not a detail.
Usually fabric.
Right.
I don't know what you're proposing here.
It doesn't look like there's a detail added, but typically it is. We just call that erosion control blanket.
Would the applicant consider something in addition to the mat in that one corner where it's in such close, such close proximity to the 100-year floodline?
I cannot answer that, but I will refer to attorney.
If John Chase had a response to the Commission's question, I suppose that the answer would depend on what that something else would consist of, but--
Can you use the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, it's John Chase. My understanding of the, or my hearing of the, of the member's question was, would the applicant consider something else in addition, in the location indicated, in addition to the erosion control mat that's been described? And I suppose the answer to that would be, it would depend on what something else is. However, I'm sure that Ms. Marquardt could comment, if, if possible, on a suggestion that any member might have in that regard. We'd certainly be willing to address the feasibility of that. My clients are here tonight, and we could, I think, bring that question to a conclusion.
Okay, so that's encouraging. We, we're not here to design it for you--
That, that is really true.
But, you know, interlocking stone, commonly referred to as riprap, slope paving, which is, almost looks like, like pavers, but it's native stone, in just that corner that's in such close proximity to the flood zone would be what, what would, I think, be satisfactory to address it in their, and in the best interest of the applicant, and I appreciate that. So if we offered that as a condition, that, that it be worked out between the applicant and the town engineer?
If you'll pardon me for just a second, sir, let me confirm--
Thank you.
For clarification, Chuck, you're talking about southeast corner?
Yes.
Thank you.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Andy? Lynn? Do I hear a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass the Commission as submitted with the stipulation that Chuck also outlined, the one stipulation, to consider the additional--
Slope protection.
Slope protection.
Slope protection--
In the southeast corner of the mat.
To be worked out between the town engineer and the--
And the developer's engineer.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All those denied? You all right, Lynn? In favor? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number two.
All right, number two, 23-129 zoning permit for Ocean Breeze Land Company. This is a zoning permit application for detached bathroom facilities at Haley Mansion, located at 9 Williams Ave, Mystic, map block lot 174-12-12, Zone RH 10. I do believe we have an applicant's representative here as well, so I'll let them present.
Okay, thank you, sir. In the meantime, I'm going to seat Fred Dykman back on, and Andy, you'll be back as an alternate. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Schopfus. I'm the architect representing the owners of the Haley Mansion. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Haley Mansion. It's a beautiful, gorgeous building right behind Rockstone 21. It's basically being used for seasonal event planning, weddings and things like that. Tent usually goes up end of April, beginning of May, depending on the weather, and it stays up for approximately six months. Part of the services that we provide for the functions that are going on at the Haley Mansion where the tent is is weddings and birthdays and all that stuff. To do that, we have to provide services for the guests and the individuals having the functions, and because the Haley Mansion doesn't have enough bathroom, adequate bathroom, we'll provide porta-potties, which are basically scattered throughout the site because they have to be accessible to be picked up, dropped off, and they have to be basically on a flat surface. We're trying to avoid that. We're trying to eliminate those porta-potties. So what we're proposing is a very simple seasonal building built up against the tent that usually gets put up, and it's only like a nine-foot by 40-foot structure that's not going to be heated, it's not going to be cooled. It provides the toilet facilities for the guests and the clients that are using the The finished materials will be basically the same as the Haley Mansion, wood construction, clapboard, same color. It's a very, very simple building, and again, it's only to get rid of the porta-potties that are all over the place. The building is not visible from anywhere. It's in the middle of the vast site. The closest, I believe, property line is approximately 325 feet. It's heavily wooded, so it's not visible from anywhere. If any of you have, are not really familiar with the, with the Haley Mansion, I did bring some pictures taken prior to the tent being erected, so if you want, I will pass them around if anybody wants to familiarize themselves with it. Other than that, like I said, it's a very simple project. We're going to tie into the Haley Mansion for the sewer, so we're not going to have any septic tank or anything on the site. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer you.
Questions?
I'm familiar with the site, so it makes a lot of sense. I see the porta-potties that you mentioned that walk up on rental sale a lot, so that makes sense to do, I think.
And so the bathrooms will be drained of water in the winter, and you just close the door?
No, no, they will tie it into the sewer directly to the Haley Mansion.
But you said they weren't going to be heated.
Correct. We're shutting it off in the wintertime, obviously, and drain it, and, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Chuck?
Is there, is there any issue with water shedding off of the roof of the tent in this location? It's going to be right up against the building, and, and it looks like in an area that is impervious now, is there going to be any issue with grading or water coming off the surface of the tent that will have to be dealt with?
Actually, the tent pitches, the, sorry, pitches the other direction from what we're proposing, and we're, our small nine-foot roof is pitching into a garden that's there already, so we shouldn't have any issues at all with any water running--
Okay, so it pitches towards the garden to the, I'm, I'm going to say that looking up on this drawing that we have, that's north, so it pitches to the north? It's shed to the north?
It pitches to the north, correct. What we're proposing pitches to the north.
That addresses my question. Thank you very much.
Is, is there any capacity issue in the sewer system? I, I thought I recalled that we were--
We're beyond, we're beyond that at WPCA. We've, we've found so much infiltration that was title-related that we were able to actually permit all the projects that were held up, and we've got some additional capacity, so WPCA is in good shape. Well, I'm not going to say they're in good shape, but, but WPCA has capacity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the application as submitted?
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chuck, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, number three, 23-126 zoning permit, EP Jones LLC. Dan Meiser is the applicant. I don't know if he's in attendance tonight. I don't believe so. So this is a zoning permit application for seasonal awnings over the existing deck, property located at 14 Holm Street, Mystic, map block lot 174-3-1. This zone is in the DB5 location. This property is actually the engine room building, so that's just reference for everyone. In March 2008, the Commission approved a special use permit for 496 square foot patio roof and 24 outdoor seats. Those seats were exempt from the parking requirement at the time of approval. The patio roof that was approved was removed sometime between 2013, 2014, and this application is to install a seasonal awning over that original location plus an additional 188 square feet for a total of 684 square feet. The new awning is going to be over the entrance to, to the engine room restaurant, and the project overall conforms to the DB5 zone bulk use requirements. That's all I have.
The only question I have is dates. When will this be stricken, and when will it be erected in place? We should have those on the record, so everybody's on the same page.
I believe potential stipulation would be to add that requirement to the applicant.
Any questions from Clifton?
Yeah, was there an increase in the seating? Did I miss that?
There's no increase in seating to this, so it'd still be the original 24 seats. No new seats are added.
Oh.
It's just an increase in square footage of the awning itself.
Of the awning itself. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, same question as the previous application. Are there any issues with drainage associated with water coming off of these roofs that might direct it, like up against the building where it is impervious now or create problems because we're, we're now going to 100% runoff condition?
We did, we did ask the applicant for an elevation drawing, which just wasn't provided by this time, so an additional would be that elevation before receiving any sort of permitting to make sure that it's sloping away from the structure itself.
Okay, that, that stipulation would, would deal with it.
Yeah.
So maybe that should be a stipulation--
Okay.
--to give you the teeth to require that down the road. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. And no other questions?
Are you going to stipulate the timing for the awning, or are you just going to say you need to stipulate it? So if they say February through December, is everybody happy with that, or do we want to give a time?
I'd be happy with some dates, yeah.
Is that seasonal, correct? So if I'm thinking, maybe spring through the end of summer?
There was mention of an existing covering to this porch in the past. Was that seasonal covering as well, or was that a permanent structure?
I'm unsure.
Yeah, me too. All right. The reason I ask is because if it was a permanent structure, does it really matter whether these are seasonal or not?
I'm pretty sure these are just like sails or canvas or fabric.
Yes.
Fabric, yes.
I mean, from, from the point of view of the, the Commission, it doesn't make much difference for the applicant. They might not want to leave seasonal awnings out all winter, but I, I don't know that it makes much difference to the approval.
I just wondered about how they're going to stipulate.
Okay.
Well, is there consensus on the dates?
I was thinking in the beginning of March to the end of September.
Yeah, one March to like the end of October.
Yeah, end of October. That's fine. That's a big enough window, and I don't think, you know, it avoids snowstorm for things that would be concerned. Yeah.
March 1st?
March 1st through October 30th.
Okay.
You could get snow in March.
Yeah. I was gonna say tax day to Halloween. There you go.
That's fine. That's fine also.
Meaning, April 15th to--
October 30th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application of EP Jones LLC for the temporary awnings over the existing deck with the stipulation that they be sloped towards the parking lot. I don't know what, I think that's in the southerly direction.
West.
And, and that they be permitted from April 15th to the last day in October.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, number four, PZ 2229, special use-- Number four, PZ twenty-two, twenty-nine, special use permit and groundwater protection permit for Mira UZ. This is a request for a ninety-day extension to file my LARS for the application approved February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The properties are located at three-seventy-six, three-eighty, and three-eighty-four Liberty Street in Bakata. And so there really isn't too much else to this. The project was originally approved February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The applicants delivered the check prints to the town dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and those were approved by staff on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And then the surveying company stated due to personal matters, the my LARS will take longer to produce and the applicant has therefore requested the ninety-day extension.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see any problem with this. I move approval of the ninety-day extension for the filing of my LARS.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five, twenty-three dash one-three-two zoning permit for the Ocean Community YMCA. This permit application for invasive plant management within the non-infringement area. Property is located at one Harry Austin Drive Mystic, map block lot one-sixty-six dash fourteen in the zones RC one-twenty. The applicant's proposal to treat and manage invasive species, invasive and nuisance plant species within a six-hundred-foot area along the beach. The invasive and nuisance species include the common reed, seaside golden round, and ground sultry. The property is, the property itself contains tidal wetlands and because it's located in the RC one-twenty zone, it's subject to a non-infringement area of a hundred feet. The treatment area, however, is outside the hundred-feet non-infringement area and is subject, not subject to approval from deep in part, as part of this process. Everything, you know, discussion with Sam. Sam Alexander from the COG, he saw no problems with this. And then so the only recommended stipulation would be that any increase in or deviation in the treatment area or scope will be reviewed and approved by staff in the commission as appropriate.
It didn't seem to me from looking at the map that was in the, in the report that that was outside of a hundred feet of the, a hundred-feet non-infringement area. So I guess I would ask that that be verified. It looked like it was right at, right at, at the water's edge.
Right, from the wetlands.
Say again?
From the wetlands.
It's not from the water.
But that should be reviewed. That's a good idea. Double check.
Yeah, I mean.
Also, I think the infringement areas define not only by wetlands, but also watercourses. It's the wetlands and watercourse attack and the standoff distances are measured from watercourses, which is much closer to a hundred feet.
Well, that's, that's exactly right, yeah. So we could have proved this if the, if the town verifies the.
Standoff distance.
The setup.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with the stipulation that the town verifies the standoff distance and the additional stipulation that any increase or deviation in the treatment area or scope of work shall be reviewed and approved by town staff and commission.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, number six, PZ twenty-two, thirty-five, SD and CAM application. This is a modification to an approved permit for a subdivision of property located at one-eleven and one-thirteen Montauk Ave, map block lot one-thirty-one dash three dash six. The zones RR eighty. And this was a project previously approved by the, by the board or the commission. And there was an issue with stipulation number ten, which I believe has come back a couple times to the commission for review. Upon review with the town attorney, there, there's a suggested potential modification to that stipulation to read that the open space fees are to be paid upon the sale of the lots. And so I believe there is a representative here of the applicant, not sure, or interested party, but town staff had no additional comment on it.
Thank you, Clifton. Attorney Ludwig, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Fine.
I see Attorney Ludwig and his return from the Emerald Isle, so I assume he's in good shape, too. A simple, you know, fix of this issue would be for the commission to state that the administration of the fee in lieu of open space would be handled in accordance with state statutes and the town subdivision regulations. Very simple, which says that upon the sale of each lot, that a proportionate share, in this case, one-half of the fee in lieu of open space would be paid.
Have you seen this wording? Do you, do you not agree with this wording that has been proposed?
I met with Attorney Ludwig before and we discussed the wording on this as provided by the town's attorney.
Yeah.
So the wording that's provided in the report is the current stipulation.
Well, that's, yeah.
That's the current stipulation. And so that would be amended to read the open space fees are to be paid upon the sale of the lots.
Right.
I'm, I'm in complete agreement with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, so didn't we just recently have an application with the different subdivision where they wanted the open space fees associated with the selling of each, each lot? And I think we denied that.
What's that?
So.
Sorry, was that the bond releases on Anguilla that you're talking about?
It was the bond, the bond releases.
Bond releases.
It wasn't the open spaces. So, you know, I mean, they could hold on to these lots for fifty years. Or, you know, for whatever. So I'm just not quite sure why we wouldn't just get it all upfront, have the money all upfront. Why would the town do this?
Is there a question there, ma'am?
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's no telling.
Are you saying there's a state statute that says that we must do this? That's what I heard you say, that in accordance with state statute.
The state statute provides in the event that there's a fee in lieu of, of open space, that the fee in lieu will be paid in proportion to the number of lots in the subdivision as to the, the number of lots, in this case is two. So half would be paid upon the sale of the first lot and half would be paid upon the sale of the second lot. That's all the state statute allows.
Okay, thank you for that.
Am I wrong to think that it's based on the appraised value of, of the property?
Yes, Mr. Dyckman, it is. Appraised value prior to the approval of the subdivision.
So this could be established anytime. It could be established now, right?
It has to be established now.
Has to be established now.
That's a solid first one.
Thank you.
Just, I'm not an appraiser by any means, but that lot was, that whole parcel was recently purchased for eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't think it appreciated greatly and I certainly don't think it depreciated greatly. So we're talking about a fee in lieu of open space of about, in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars to be paid on the sale of the first lot and forty thousand dollars to be paid, roughly forty thousand, on the sale of the second lot.
Any further questions?
I think the, we had an extensive opinion on this from Candy Power.
We had her research, yes?
And, and they thought that the, the method of settlement and the amount was very, very unofficial to the, the town's fund that's used to purchase other open space and were in favor of it and encouraged us to approve it.
Any other comments?
Comment is I see it's fifty-fifty. And wasn't this the lots was ninety-five percent or five percent land was?
Ninety-five percent of what?
The two lots, they're now fifty-fifty on the land.
Oh, no, no, no. The, the, the smaller lot is about eighty thousand square feet, just over, and the larger lot is about twenty, about thirty-two, about thirty acres.
Yeah, so.
The payment, the payment of, the payment is not based on the size of the lot. The payment is based on the number of lots in the subdivision.
Do I hear a motion of this?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with the stipulation that the applicant shall pay fifty percent of the fee in lieu of open space upon transfer to lot one and the sooner of, A, the transfer to lot two, or B, prior to any approvals for construction of any structure in lot two. A lien shall be placed on the property prior to or concurrent with the recording of the final subdivision plan. After the fee is paid for an individual lot, the town shall release a lien on the land evidence records.
Mr. Chairman, that's the stipulation that we're amending.
Yeah, that's the old one.
Oh, that's the old one? Sorry, it says it to you.
That's the stipulation.
My bad.
Being amended.
My bad, and I'm not.
I'm not sure we had the words just.
Yeah, that's what I thought this was the wording for, for that one, the new one. So.
Mr. Ireland, do you have that again?
So the proposed stipulation or some, somewhere thereof would be to read that the open space fees are to be paid upon the sale of each lot. So it'd be fifty-fifty, which is not huge, but that would just, that would be state statute, but it would just be upon the sale of the lot, each lot.
Right. So make a motion to approve the application with that stipulation that the sale of the fees would be paid on the sale of each lot in accordance with state statute.
Does. Second.
I'm sorry. I know we're trying to make a motion. Does sale include transferral of ownership?
I don't.
I just don't know what the situation is, but if this is like a family and say the parents have purchased the property and they are giving the smaller parcel.
Connecticut state statutes allow for exemptions for six specified immediate family members. So if it were to one of those, it would negate the collection of that fee for the state statute.
Got it.
So why, if this is a state statute and we have to follow it, why was it originally stated the way it was?
I don't know the, I don't know if that came from Keith or Sam, or I have no idea where that number ten came from initially.
Mr. Chairman, the language of section eight dash twenty-five A is shall be paid when each lot is sold or conveyed.
Or conveyed.
Or conveyed.
Okay.
So that would include transferring.
That covers it.
That's a stipulation.
And he's conditioned.
So I think we had a second. We were in the discussion phase.
Second is restated.
Second has been restated, yeah. And we're all clear on what we're voting on?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Old business.
All right, old business. First application, PZ twenty-three-ten subdivision Hector and Anna Ramirez. The application's for a two-lot subdivision of a four-point-one-four acre parcel. Property is located at thirteen-oh-five Peacock Trail, map block lot one-forty-eight dash three, three, dash six A. Zone is RR eighty. Don't know if a representative of the applicants in the. Do you want to, do you want to come up and describe the project?
So, good evening. My name is Hernan Ramirez and we're proposing to subdivide my parents' property in order for my family to build a three, three-bedroom home there. It's a four-acre property and our surveyor has provided a map to the town. And we've been in communication with Sam and we've, we've had some questions back and forth, but our surveyor has answered all the questions and I think we're in good standing now.
Okay. Any questions?
I didn't have one from the town engineer on this one.
I did not receive one from the town engineer on this.
So he has not completed his review?
Uh, no. One of the items associated with this, this property was part of a free split in nineteen-eighty-four, so this is a secondary split off of that. So that's why it's before you. One of the items the applicant's requesting is an exemption from the open space requirement because the transfer of the land will be to an immediate family member under section eight-point-five-point-three. So there would be no open space allotment given as part of this project. And then the applicants also requested a couple waivers of this application. Those are listed, but I'll note them off. The requirement to provide sidewalks, the requirement for drainage and stormwater management report, the requirement for a shadow plan, the requirement for a flood hazard report, an archaeological assessment and management plan, and a natural diversity database report.
Well, with regards to the waiver of the fifty percent fee, if the applicant sells the property in three years or something like that, it's just, Don, they will, you know.
So this, this would be, fall under the same thing that Susan mentioned before, that the, the negation of the open space fee because it's exemption by giving it to an immediate family member. So that would just negate it altogether.
And what would be the open space designation then? How much of the property would be open space? We do not take the fee.
So it'd be, it'd be a minimum of fifteen percent of the total lot area or a fee in lieu of ten percent of the appraised value? And so they're requesting exemption from that because the split, the second lot, will go to an immediate family member under state statutes requirements.
But if the town does not agree to the fee, then we get, there, there's no exemption. We can move forward with the open space. It's not an exemption because of going to an immediate family member. Is that correct?
The exemption would be for both. It'd be for either the, the open space area itself or the fee. And so the exemption is for both. So no open space or fee is required.
If it's going to an immediate family member, there's no requirement for open space? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And do we need proof of record that it's a family member somehow? And is there a need to?
Yeah, the, the section of the ordinance.
That's fine here. I'm on the town record, besides this record.
Yeah, so section eight-point-five-point-three, one of the sub portions of that piece states the town may require reasonable evidence of the relationship of the transferee to the transfer and the fact that the transfer was made for no consideration before any portion of the subdivision will be treated as a buildable lot.
Thank you. Any other questions from the other male? So there's two votes we need here.
Waivers than the actual subdivision?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the requested subdivision waivers.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now for the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the recommended six stipulations that the town planner provided. I can read them into the record if need be.
Yes, please.
Okay. First stipulation, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number two, final plan shall include new street address and assessors lot numbers assigned by the town. Number three, final mylar copies of plan shall be filed with the town clerk and submitted for signature by the commission. Number four, AutoCAD drawing of the approved subdivision shall be submitted to the town prior to recording. A fee in lieu of this drawing to cover the town's cause to create such a digital file may be submitted per section three dot nine dot two of the subdivision regulations. Number five, per section five dot ten dot two of the subdivision regulations, boundary markers must be installed. Installation shall be certified through a registered land surveyor prior to sale of any lots. And number- And number six, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of any zoning permits for the requirements of Section eight dot six dot three of the zoning regulations and Section six dot one dot six of the subdivision regulations. Bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or irrevocable letter of credit. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of completion. And number seven, proposed Lot six A dash one will be deemed a buildable lot until the property has been transferred to a family member listed in Section eight-point-five-point-three of the subdivision regulations. The town may require reasonable evidence for the relationship of the transfers to the transferor and the fact that the transfer was made for no consideration before Lot six A dash one will be treated as a buildable lot.
Thank you, Ryan. We've had a second, all those, I think we've had a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
Thanks. Next item, PZ twenty-three-eleven site plan and CAM for the Latimer Point Condom Minimum Association. Site plan and coastal area management review for various additions, decks, exterior stairs, sheds, and outdoor shower. Properties located at two North Shore Road, five Center Drive, nine Center Drive, thirty-four East Shore Road, and one-twelve Latimer Point Road, map block lot, and there's gonna be a list of them. One-fifty-four dash two dash fifteen, one-fifty-four dash four dash twenty-one, one-fifty-four dash four dash twenty-two, one-fifty-four dash five dash five, one-fifty-four dash two dash sixteen A, and these properties are located in the RM, or RM twenty zone. I'd like to firstly make a disclosure that I am a homeowner and a member of the Latimer Point condo association, so I just want that on the record for everybody to know. This, uh, this report mainly was done by Sam Alexander at the CAG, but I did, I did have a role in writing some of it.
But none of your properties are listed?
None of my properties are listed as part of this.
Thank you. Is there someone representing Latimer Point?
Is there a representative?
Usually we've had the, uh...
No, the past couple times Ed Lally has done that.
Oh, all right. Yeah, your buddy, yeah.
So I, I assume that the, um, the commission's familiar with how the condo association, the LPCA, works with its, um, applications. They come in in one bulk set once per year, and so this is for a series of different projects located on-site. Each one of them is meeting the requirements for the association itself, they've already been pre-approved, and then from the perspective of how we look at it from a town's, town point of view, we consider the entirety of the association as one lot itself with different sublots in that are managed separately by the association. So all of the bulk use and use requirements kind of become null and void here as they're managed separately inside the association.
Right. We still haven't heard from Connecticut DEEP?
No, we haven't, so, um, a couple, the property is in the CAM overlay district, and portions of the site, or portions of the Latimer Point site are in the RC one-twenty zone, but none of those are, none of the RC one-twenty zone areas are being affected by these applications. However, the improvements to units seventy-two and seventy-three do fall within the coastal A zone, and those projects before receiving a building permit are going to be, required to be FEMA compliant. We did reach out to Connecticut DEEP for their comment and haven't received those yet, so I did add that as a stipulation to the final approval.
Thank you, Clifton. Any further questions, Chris Clifton? Comments?
Appears to be, the list of modifications appears to be limited in the most part to second-floor additions over the existing footprint and new sheds for the most part. There's one new deck.
Right.
And, and addition, but de minimis in terms of the overall area of the parcels.
I agree.
Mr. Lally does an extremely nice job, he's the engineer that, I think, I think he's a resident also down there.
Yes, he is.
That is a very competent civil engineer and does an excellent job putting this together every year.
Do, do we wait for DEEP or do we approve it subject to?
Yeah, it looks like the stipulation is in there to...
Okay. Yeah, I'd say it's a stipulation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Modifications and we have plans, DEEP shall be reviewed and approved by DEEP, so they're, they're meant to call it out in two stipulations.
So I think we have two votes on this one?
Yep. I think the first one, Mr. Chairman, would make a, a motion to approve the CAM application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there any discussion on the CAM app? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then site application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site application with the five recommended stipulations. I'll read those in the record. Number one, final site plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number two, individual zoning permits for the site development plan shall be submitted for properties that propose new construction and/or substantial improvements to ensure compliance with flood hazard regulations. Number three, individual site development plan shall include adequate erosion and sedimentation control measures as determined by the town engineer. Number four, improvement shall conform to public health code requirements as determined by CT DEEP. And number five, modifications to individual site development plans required by CT DEEP shall be reviewed and approved by town staff and the commission as necessary.
Thank you, Ryan. Please hear a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That leads us up to the public hearing. I'll take a quick break, everybody want to keep on going? Keep on going. Lynn, would you read in the call?
We'd like to open the public hearing, PZ two-three-zero-eight ZC, Spa and CAM, Town Stonington, C Frost. Master Plan Zone Change Site Plan and Coastal Area Management Review Applications for Creation of a Mystic River Boathouse Park. Property located at one-two-three Greenville Av, Mystic, excuse me, Assessor's Map one-seven-two Block One, Lot One, Zone MHD.
Thank you, Lynn. Seated this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Ferber, Fred Dykman, and Lynn Conaway. There are hopefully the correct sign-up sheets at the, we came in, if you'd like to speak, we'll first hear from the applicant, and then open the floor to public comments, pros, cons, or general comments, and if Mr. Frost is okay, we'll pepper him with questions as he proceeds, and then the applicant could have a rebuttal after the public comment, and hopefully we can get to a decision this evening.
Are you ready? All right, thank you all so much, we'll try and be brief, you know, so...
Excuse me, can you say your, your name and address, please?
Yes. Can I give the town address? Um, no, so for those who don't know me, I'm Danielle Cheeseborough, I'm the first selectman in Stonington, this is a town project that we're obviously submitting. Um, thank you every, thank you, thank you everybody for your patience, is that better?
Yeah.
So I want to invite Mike O'Neill up because he is someone who's been shepherding this project since the beginning in 2016. Unfortunately, our chair of the Mystic River Boathouse Park Committee got held up and couldn't be here, but we'd like to just give everybody here a little bit of background, kind of set the tone, and then obviously there's a lot of people here who probably want their thoughts to be heard, so, um, we, if it's fine with you, I'd like to yield the floor to Mike to give a little more context.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thank you for having us tonight. There's a lot of people in this room that have waited a very long time for this evening. We've been, as Danielle said, working on this for sixteen years. I am the vice chair of the Stonington Mystic River Boathouse Park Implementation Committee. I'm also the president of the newly formed... Better leave than never, buddy. The president of the Stonington Community Rowing, Inc., which is the organized body that will run the boathouse once it is, once it is in existence. Want to talk a little bit about the crew team. We started twenty-five years ago with the dream of providing an opportunity for kids at the high school to get access to the Mystic River. Started with a small group of kids, twenty, thirty kids. In the last twenty-five years, we've grown to be one of the biggest sports at the high school, routinely having forty, fifty, sixty, even as many as ninety kids involved in the program. We row in the spring and in the fall. We, many years ago, realized that there was a lot more opportunities for access to the river than just what we could provide for the high school, and we started working on a plan to provide a community rowing, uh, opportunity for the town of Stonington. I've been very fortunate, and we have been very fortunate, to be able to work with the former selectmen and current selectmen to help us formulate that process into a reality that you see in front of you tonight. It's been an effort of many, many people who worked tirelessly as volunteers to put this together. It is something that I think will be a, a game change in the town of Stonington. It's going to provide access to the river, it's going to provide community rowing access for all ages, uh, year-round. It will allow us to move from just being able to support a small number of high school kids to allow anybody in the public to come down and get on the water and access the river. So it's a unique opportunity, it's a great utilization of the property, and the park is even a greater asset to the town, so I'm here speaking just for, for my part about the boathouse. But Nick, you want to talk a little bit about the park?
Certainly. Nick Keppel, I'm the chair of the Park Implementation Committee, and as Mike says, this has been a six-year, I think, effort. The good news is, I worked on a project in stores in Mansfield where it took them ten years to create the, the little new downtown that you have across from the UConn campus, so we're not there yet, but, you know, five hundred people showed up, you know, six years ago to express their support for another access point to the, to our water resources. As you know, we're a coastal community with, you know, incredibly limited access to the, to the, to the, to the water. Jim Spelman wanted to buy what is now the winery, uh, on Route One.
Salt Water.
Salt Water, which I, I represented them, so I should remember the name, but the town didn't want to go for it then. I, I tried to get the town to buy the pond behind Seal Plumbing and, at the, where, where the original settlement of Stonington was, and for a hundred thousand dollars thirty years ago, the town didn't want to do that. So this is an unbelievable opportunity to give the, the townspeople and the community access to the water, which is a precious commodity. So I just want to say a few words about, because of so many people who have, who expressed through their vote, uh, support for this, so many people who've worked hard on this, I couldn't agree more with, with Mike. This is going to be, truly believe transformative for the community in so many ways. It's gonna, it's gonna create this new gateway to Mystic, which is gonna add to the already remarkable appeal that Mystic has to the world. It's really going to change, when you look at the pictures of what it looks like now with the fencing and the trees, and you're going to be able to, as you drive south on, on twenty-seven, you're gonna be able to see the, the tip of the seaport and the river, because one of the things that we don't, you know, take into consideration is, you can drive from literally old Mystic into, you know, the lower part of twenty-seven and almost, you know, get these tiniest little glimpses of the river there. So it's going to provide a fantastic vista, it's gonna, and by the way, we know that the site has its challenges, you know, we, we grant you that, but any site at this point where you're trying to give the public access to the water is gonna have its, its various challenges, but it's going to be a phenomenal opportunity to transform the high school rowing program, but also it's going to be allowed to build a, a community rowing program, and even though I am, having had three children go through the rowing program, it's, and I'm so excited about, you know, in my lifetime, I truly believe we're going to have a, an Olympian, not to mention, you know, we've already had countless successful college rowers, but we have one, you know, one athlete who was probably a back injury away from participating in Olympics, but we're going to have our Olympians, we're going to continue to send kids to colleges, and, and on that, on the, quick thing on the high school, the thing that blew me away about the, the high school rowing program was so many young people, boys in, you know, men in, young men and women, who hadn't done a sport until they did crew, and it had a trend, participating in crew had a transformative effect in, on their lives. A friend of my daughter's had never played any organized sports until she rode as a freshman or sophomore, she was in the original class, you know, twenty-plus years ago. By the time she was a senior, she was so good that her rowing helped her get into Tufts, and she coaxed, she, um, stroked the Tufts knob in a freshman novice boat, women's boat, to third place in a national championship. You know, this is four years earlier, she had never done a sport before, so the, the potential that the sport has to change young people's lives is, is boundless, and, but the other thing that shouldn't be lost is, this is not just going to be the home, the new home of the high school rowing program, it's going to be a home for community rowing, and, you know, a friend of mine, Ed Monahan, rows almost a million meters a year up on Long Pond in Ledgeard, he's eighty-three. You know, you're going to see that people who didn't think they were rowers are going to become rowers because they now have this wonderful access to boathouse. And, and lastly, and, and not insignificantly, we're going to make provision so that adaptive rowing can go on there. My son, who suffered a brain injury twenty years ago, has rowed in a wonderful little adaptive rowing program in Noank, but it's very limited, you know, it's only for a few weeks in the summer, but I have to share with you that, just to give you a sense of what being on the water, how it transforms people's lives, there was a woman that rode the adaptive rowing program over, um, Angerton, who, she lived in like Essex. Her husband would take her to Saybrook, she would take a train from Saybrook to Mystic, take a cab from Mystic to, to, what's the name of the?
Beebe Cove.
Beebe Cove, to the, there's a, anyway, just to be on the water for, oh, she was, she was a visual, vision impaired. It was so magical for her to be able to spend forty-five minutes on the water that she took, went to those lengths to be able to get on the water, and we're talking about something that's going to allow literally thousands of people over the course of a year to have this kind of experience on the water. So, um, I would, for all the myriad reasons why it's going to, you know, transform and benefit our community, I would heartily urge you to carefully consider and give full consideration to the approval of this plan.
I can't wait to see the business.
What's that?
I can't wait to see the plan.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Thank you, Nick.
Good evening, commission. Again, my name is Chad Frost, principal with Kent Frost Leadership Architecture, happy to be in front of you tonight, helping represent the town for what is truly a transformational project. Hopefully we'll get the plans up there soon. There we go, thank you. So I'll, I'll come back to the rendering a couple of times, I think this is the easiest plan to kind of visually be able to see, especially on the screen, but I'll go through all the CAD files that you have in front of you. We've also interspersed some photographs to help give you context as we go through. Assuming this works.
Is there any way you can make that larger, Chad?
Get rid of that, that's as big as I can go. Is that better? Any bit?
Sure.
Better?
Can you go to slideshow? Is that our?
This is, this is, no, this is the PDF, this is the biggest, so we can zoom in, I'll get, I'll zoom in as we go through. Yep, I think everybody knows where this is, this is on Route twenty-seven directly across from Rossville Mill. I'm here, fortunate enough to be able to talk about it, but I'm part of a much larger team that was part of this design, so phase... So Phase Zero Architects is the architects for the boathouse itself. Weston and Sampson is our civil engineer. On the project, AECOM is our LEP, that's the Licensed Environmental Professional, doing the remediation, as well as our living shoreline specialist. First Water Engineering is our coastal permitting engineer. Down-to-earth Consultants is our geotech, and Stadia Engineering is our local survey. So I'm here, but there's a huge team that's much smarter than me behind me. So this is the survey. I'll zoom in as we go around. The first thing I'll point out of the overall property, obviously Rossi Mill is directly beside, Latitude, or the former Latitude Restaurant, is right here on the right-hand side of the plan. Something that's been a big topic of discussion over the years is the easements over this property in favor of, there's two of them. The first one I'll point out here is this first line from the property line over is a drainage easement. There's a large drain pipe right there that is the, all the drainage for Route 27 drains through the property. The second easement is in favor of the seaport, that's the entire shaded gray area that allows for the access in and out of what will be soon the Delamar Hotel site. I'll point out the rest of the site. This is the existing house known as the Lovelace House. There's a wood deck that surrounds it, an above-ground pool that has been demolished by the town, a grass lawn, and then the garage. All along this frontage, as we're all probably very familiar with, there is a fence that has been lowered a number of years ago, but it is a solid wood fence all the way along the perimeter. For the most part, the back of the property is just a lawn with a small gravel area. There are minor amounts of trees on the property. One of the very important parts of this project and this development is truly the history of this particular site. Wanted to show you this to talk about the fact that the land literally would not be here. We would not have the land for this park if it was not for the Rossi Mill directly across the street. This is an image of the Rossi Mill and how it expanded over time. So in 1898, due to tariffs on silk, we got a mill over here so that we could mill silk in our country as opposed to importing it. So in 1898, they built the first part of the Rossi Mill. You can see across the street here how narrow the strip of land was, right? So by 1904, this is how narrow the land is, that darker color. The river really came all the way up to the edge of Route 27, and by 1904 is when we have the first indication that the Lovelace House was on site. The reason this land built and went out into the river over time is due to this tunnel that's directly under Route 27. This is an image of what that tunnel looked like. It's not huge, but it was an electric cart that they went back and forth. So in order to power the mill, the ships came up, they dumped coal on the beach, they ran it through the tunnel, burned it in the mill, and then came, brought it back through the tunnel and dumped it on the shoreline when they were done with it, and all that coal slag is what has built this site. So you can see really over the course of about 30 years, the site grew exponentially out into the river, and because of that, we have land, and because of that, we as a town have a remediation project to be able to use that land. But a pretty neat story, and one that we do want to bring to the forefront, because I don't think most people understand it, and we really do want to tout the history of both the Lovelace House and the Rossi Mill. Looking, just to give you a little bit more history and context, this is right as, you know, this is probably 1904 timeframe, so the Rossi Mill, this is the first phase of the mill, was the northernmost piece, and you can see the power plant. All along here, you can see that the road basically is a cliff and some rocks right down to the river. Interestingly enough, that white kind of four-by-four fence that's on River Road on the Groton side right along there is also what was along Route 27 back in the, you know, early 1900s. I'll point out now, as we pan over, this is the Lovelace House. Right now, you can see the water coming all the way up to it, and it looks like a three-story building because the basement is a full walkout basically right to the river. And I'll point out this little shed, where the roof of the shed is at the road elevation of Route 27. That's what we believe is like the shed covering the tunnel access going back and forth. As we progress now, a few years later, probably about 20 years later, you can now see the mill has about doubled in size, so there's significantly more mill, and significantly more fill now piled out on the site. That same roof that we were just looking at is right there. So just the tip of the roof is now visible from this side of the river, and again, you can see the house and pretty much the water still coming pretty close to it. And now, another 10 years, so, the shed that was the access port is now gone. There's a new garage, which is the first half of the garage that's currently on site, is kind of built, and you can just see how much fill all the way out, the Lovelace House, you can't see the basement anymore, it's filled all the way up to it. And the fill goes all the way out to the end, and if you've been out there, there is a rock wall around the end, and there's some old pilings that you can still see. This was the pier that was out there at the very end, where eventually, instead of just dumping the coal on the beach, they started dumping it into an offloading facility like that. So very interesting history that we're looking forward to kind of bringing to the forefront of the public as we go through this project. Back to the CAD plan, this is our simple demolition plan. The very simple part is the Lovelace House. We are, we had a long negotiation with SHPO, as probably you've read about in the newspapers. We are keeping the Lovelace House and relocating it further to the north. The shed will be torn down, and effectively, because of the remediation, all of the rest of the site, we're stripping what little topsoil there is there, stripping some of the vegetation, and then we're required to fill for cap of contaminated soil. I will point out here that this is the approved parking lot for the Delamar Hotel access next door. That is within that easement area that I showed on the survey. This is being built by the Delamar. So in this situation, we're acting like it's an existing condition, even though it has yet to be built yet. And I'll just point out to you that the driveway entrance, we're just finishing up now our OSTA review for the DOT review of that driveway exit, so this is slightly different configuration than what you would have saw when we got our planning and zoning approval, because OSTA has required a one-way, excuse me, one way in, one way out, a right in, right out for that particular driveway.
Would you mind repeating that one more time?
Sure.
Slowly.
So we're just finishing up the OSTA review, the Office of State Traffic Authority, review for that access, that curb cut onto Route 27. As you know, they won't review anything until local has already approved it. And so what they are requiring, because there's a little bit of this turn queue lane that cars potentially could queue there, turning left into the seaport, that if somebody was coming north on Route 27, there could be cars there blocking the driveway in, so they didn't want a left-hand turn into this driveway. So all I'm pointing out to you is it's a slightly different configuration than what you would have saw associated with the Delamar, and they made us put in this rumble strip island to help direct traffic, although it is still flush to allow for pedestrian access straight across it. So just wanted to point that out. Next is the improvement plan. Again, I'm going to jump to the rendered plan in just a second, but the details, just to highlight for you, the zoning compliance chart. We are in the MHD zone, that was changed a number of years ago from residential to MHD, and as you can see, all of our side yard, front yard requirements, we meet all of those requirements. From a parking perspective, Stonington does not have Boathouse Park as a parking generator in the table, and so what we did do is go to the Traffic Engineering Authorities and used Athletic Club, because that's what closely matched how this building will be used. An Athletic Club at this size of a building for proposed, we need 44 spaces. What we are able to provide is 15 onsite spaces, four drop-off spaces, seven shared spaces, and then we have an agreement with the seaport to be able to provide 22 additional spaces across the street behind the Rossi Mill. And so that's what this plan shows, as again, this is Rossi Mill. Boathouse Park extends the entire frontage basically of the mill. The 22 spaces for the boathouse will be signed back here. As part of the Rossi Mill project that you approved a few months back for the new entrance here, there's a new sidewalk going along the edge of the pentway, and so we'll have pedestrian access from parking back here all the way down to the lighted intersection for crossing, coming to the park. And so that's how the parking will be handled. I will note that currently, the crew team, if you're talking about Stony High School Crew, uses the seaport for their practices, and they currently all, you know, park, anybody that's coming by bus or by car currently parks at the seaport already. So that use already exists today in that location, so we think this will work out very well as we move forward. To quick run through the rest of the plan on a rendered plan, just to make it a little bit easier, again, this is the current alignment for that entrance-exit for the half of the parking lot that serves the Delamar Hotel. What we're proposing is that on the other half, on the, what I'll call the park side, it is an entrance-only. This is still a 24-foot wide aisle so that cars can fully back up and maneuver very easily, but it's one-way coming in. We have a drop-off zone all the way along here that will serve both, you know, parents dropping off or picking up rowers, or the public going to put in their kayak. This is a rooftop launch area, so kayaks, paddleboards, canoes, those type of things on the rooftop. You can pull up here, unload your canoe, and then go find a parking space and come back again, so that's the drop-off zone. Then this side of the parking lot is two-way so that we can get vehicles moving both ways. I'll point out, we do have a large area for that drop-off. We have removable bollards, lit bollards, all along here to be able to keep vehicles from coming back into the park, but allow for a large area for people to be able to load and unload. We have our bike racks adjacent to the boathouse itself. This is a public restroom that opens to the outside so that the park and the public have the ability to use a restroom that's not interior to the boathouse itself. We have the river walk as we loop all the way around. One of the things that, when we were first starting this project and talking about what coastal access would mean, right, we wanted this for coastal access. The more we got into it with the contaminated soils, we know we need to protect people from the soils. This portion of the beach, the southern area, has got a whole lot of glass in it, and I've got a picture to show you of that in a few minutes, but glass, yep. So lots and lots of glass that we felt we could never thoroughly clean to be able to make safe for use all the time, or to have the public be able to get down to it. This area of the site is surrounded by that existing stone wall, which used to be where that pier was for unloading and loading coal. And then this portion of the site, the beach over here, looks to be pretty good when you're out there. It can be sandy at low tide. However, there are pipes and debris. There was another building that we know about here that was just pushed into the ground. So the feeling was is that we could never thoroughly clean the waterfront itself, the edge of the water, to a point to where we know it would be safe to encourage public use. So what we are proposing is a river walk so that you can get up to the edge, up to the bluff, if you will, be able to see the water all the way around, and then have the two access points. So one for the crew team, this is the crew team's dock, it's a large flat dock with a ramp down to, then a very large float to be able to launch and land crew boats. And then on this side is the public float, so this is, again, a long ramp down to a dinghy dock or a tie-up dock. This is for full public access. We've talked about it, to be able to also help encourage the anchorage, the larger anchorage that's wanted out in the river, so that people could tie up, if they come into Mystic via boat, they could take the dinghy over, tie up, and then be able to go into town that way as well. And then obviously, the boat ramp. This is, as I mentioned, non-motorized boat ramp, so no backing trailers down, it's all car top. I'll note that we do have bollard lights all the way along the river walk, and I'll point out, our, these little bands that don't look like much here on the plan, those are our historical landmark indicators, right? So we have granite set in the ground, carved with a date and a time, to really talk about where the land was at a certain point, that initial image of how the land grew over time. We want to bring that story to the forefront. We have some historical interpretive signages to talk about that, and then we're also putting it as a marker down on the ground plane, again, to bring that to people's attention. We have some benches for people to be able to hang out and watch either races or just the river itself all along here, and then we've got, this has been a very big community project, we've had a lot of different organizations reach out and want to help and participate. Some of the garden clubs reached out and said they really want to have a pollinator garden. So this particular area of the park is the pollinator garden with all native perennials to be able to encourage that habitat. And then along the frontage is a large sidewalk, so this is now wider than what's currently there, again, to provide a wonderful streetscape experience. We have the street trees, we have street lighting, it's the same lighting that we're proposing in front of the hotel, in front of the seaport, very similar to what's in front of Coogan Farm, so we start to create a theme along there. And then one of the most exciting things is the living shoreline, all the way along the edge. So the remediation requires at least a two-foot of fill over the top of the contaminated soil, and so what we were tasked to do is how do we treat that edge? When you get to the water, you can't just obviously dump it off into the edge, you need to have some sort of containment. And everything is the option. You can have bulkheads, you can have revetments, you can do all these things, but as we had early discussions with the town and with the public, the living shoreline really rose to the top that people were really interested in. So this is a way to use nature, to basically plant the seeds, so that nature can help defend itself against both just average, everyday tides and storms, as well as sea level rise. So this has been designed to accommodate 20 inches of sea level rise, which is what's predicted for our area up through 2050. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit. Quick, the Sedimentation Erosion Control Plan is kind of simple. We're affecting the entire site, so we have S and E basically all the way out to the very perimeter of the site. We do have some stockpile onsite, although we don't really expect to have much soil being stockpiled, it's really just temporary subsoils will be stockpiled in that area as digging is necessary. We do have a de-watering area if it's necessary during foundation for the buildings, although again, based on everything we've done with groundwater testing and monitoring, we know there's groundwater there, we don't think we're going to be deep enough to really get into it very much, and so we have just a small area to accommodate that if we need it. Grading plan. So again, one of the things driving this project is we've got water, obviously on one side, we've got the road on the other side. The road, the high point of the road is up here at elevation 10, and so it was important, obviously, to be able to get into the building and get out of the building and cover the soil appropriately with at least that two feet of clean fill, and then get down to a point to where we can access the water. I'll also point out that the Lovelace House, where it was currently situated, which is over here, as we pick it up and move it to this current location, it gets lifted up to elevation 13. So flood zone in this location is elevation 11. We're recommending 11 plus 2, which is one more obviously than your minimum required. Again, that's for that 20 inches of sea level rise that we anticipate over the next 30 to 40 years. So the Lovelace House is located here at elevation 13. We have what we call the connector, which is connecting through also at elevation 13, and then when we get to the boathouse, because the boathouse is a water-dependent use, and it needs to be as close as we can get it to grade to the water, because I rode in UConn, I understand how heavy it is to carry the boats back and forth, and you don't want to have giant drops and cliffs and grade changes. So we were very cognizant of where we located that building vertically. And what I can tell you is that we set this edge, the waterside edge of the building, at elevation eight and a half. That was intentional, Hurricane Sandy, when it came up, we took that mark as to how the high water got, and we added 20 inches of sea level rise again to that, so that this building, that front edge, should be able to accommodate a category 2-ish storm with 20 inches of sea level rise before we start to get water into the building. The building is, you know, will be within that flood plain, right? Because it's a water-dependent use, it does not have to be at elevation 13. It does have to allow for the flood to come in and go out, as all buildings do that are in that area. So this end of the building is at eight and a half. We do have a pitch within the slab, it is a fairly long slab, so it's actually a one-foot of grade change as we go over the entire building, and we come out the front on the landward side at nine and a half. And then we have quite a bit of grading to kind of make things work and be comfortable both with the road and make sure all the drainage pitches away from all the doors. What I'll also note here is stormwater infiltration. So as I mentioned, Weston and Sampson's are a civil engineer, they have designed a stormwater treatment system that does include a separator out here in the parking lot, so all of the parking, or most of the parking, goes into this drain, it goes through a hydraulic separator, before it then goes back into an infiltrator system. That infiltrator is mostly underneath the parking lot, and I'll note that we have this separation within the parking lot, a wide area of permeable pavers that also acts as a large surface drain. So we have a high point up here, pitching this way towards the low point, and so as that water is shedding across this portion of the parking lot, and we do expect infiltration through those permeable pavers, which then literally goes right down into the top of the chambers and acts as our capacity storage. which then literally goes right down into the top of the chambers and acts as our capacity storage. So that does meet one-inch requirement for water quality volume from a storm generation perspective. There is no increase in discharge when you look through the whole 300-page drainage report that says everything works like it should, which is great. And then that, after going through the infiltrator, it does discharge out to the shoreline. And I will note that there is a weirder structure in that discharge. We are intentionally trying to keep the one-inch water volume and nothing greater than that. We had some discussions with the town engineer about how much was the appropriate amount. We didn't want to exceed the one inch because what we don't want to do is hold the volume of water right here and then for a longer duration, and then start releasing it at the same time the floodwaters or rainwaters from uphill are getting to this point of the river at the same time. So we're intentionally holding the first inch, then releasing everything afterwards so that we don't compound a flood during a larger storm event. Grading-wise, we basically then, this whole river walk down here, our high point is about elevation 6, as you can see. We do have a little low swale between the walk and the pitch down to the river so that any water draining across this lawn has a place to settle out. Any sediment coming across can drop before it starts shedding down to the river itself. That's the grading. Some more, this is the technical components of the stormwater. Again, I won't go into it all, but we do have all the roof leaders picked up. We do have electric service. We do have sewer service. We have a note or a letter from the WPCA. We did go through the volume analysis on this building, and it was, at that point, there was 1,000 gallons per day left in the cap. We were underneath of that. And so we met all those requirements as well. Lighting. As I mentioned, we do have streetlights all the way along here. Although these photometric rings look slightly different, it's the same fixture all the way through. We're just using different optics within that fixture so we can throw light where we want light. So in these locations, we want light on the sidewalk and out into the street to see people potentially crossing. In these locations, as the sidewalk widens, we want to spread a wider pool of light. Same fixtures, same amount of, I'll say lumens output, but just depends on how we throw the light differently. And then the bollard lights that you can see along the pathway on the river, those are not meant to light up the park bright enough for people to really want to use it at night, right? And so this park, the park itself, will be closed at dusk. It's a dawn-to-dusk park. The building itself will be able to be used after hours, just like all buildings can be. But the police commission was concerned about easy access to be able to patrol so that if somebody's driving, if a police officer is driving by, they'd be able to see into the park and be able to tell if there was somebody there late at night that shouldn't be there. And so the bollard lights offer just enough light in there to kind of see if somebody's in there when they shouldn't be in there and add a nice effect as well.
Chad, could you make those motion-sensitive?
Could we make them motion-sensitive? My short answer is I don't know.
I mean, that would really light up if somebody was supposed to...
It would. We've done it for high-level streetlights. For like, we have, there's three settings on some that we can get where it's like after 2 o'clock, they dim way down, and then they can go on if there's an emergency. We could look into it to see if that's a possibility, for sure.
And, excuse me.
Yep.
The lighting, is it the bollard lighting, do you see it from the water or just from the street? From the street?
So these lights are 100% cutoff fixtures. You shouldn't see the light source from anywhere. So the pole lights along the street, all the light goes down. The bollard lights, as I'll show you right here, has the light up above. So this is, it's a stainless steel bollard. The light source is in the top, and the light angles down out of it. Again, to get that dark sky compliant cutoff. You will see a little bit of that reflection on that stainless steel as the light comes out, but it's not the light source itself, so it's not a bright light in your eyes, if that answers your question.
Okay, so you're going to see it from the water?
You will see a little, you'll see that little ring of stainless steel having a light on it.
Thank you.
Yep. This is the pole fixture along the road. Again, same fixture that's in front of the Thompson Building at Seaport right now and will be in front of the Delamar. We did, I say we, the committee, we let the committee vote on all of these amenities, right? So it wasn't me picking or Danielle picking, but the committee, we put a big package together and let everybody kind of go through and rank and vote what they wanted. And stainless steel was one that was, we were recommending, but also the committee went with it because of that coastal environment and the ability for it to be able to withstand the longest longevity, since it is a town project and we don't want to require maintenance very, as minimally as we can, I'll say. We have permanent bollards. We have the lit bollards, and then we have removable bollards. We have the bike racks. This is the image of the bike rack. Again, a stainless steel rack with a bumper on the side of it, and then the benches as well. Signage and striping. I won't get into all the traffic signage. It's all there. We can talk about it if you'd like to. But normally, what I would imagine you care most about is the actual signage on the park itself. We do have some institutional wall signs that go on the front and back of the boathouse. We have a freestanding sign in front of the building that identifies both the park and the boathouse as well. So that's the freestanding sign. We have institutional signs on the front and back of the building, and on the edge, the corner up here, the peak. And then we have historical interpretive signage. We did label these as part of the signage. There will be environmental interpretive signage along the river walk that we didn't because it's not visible from the public view. So if you remember like how we do everything for the MHD district for the seaport, if it's visible from the public view, it gets counted as their signage. If it's not visible, then it's not counted as signage. So that was the determination there. And these are the signs, so the two signs up on the building, and then the freestanding sign in front of the building identifying the park and the community roaming center. This sign panel at the bottom will be to signify upcoming events. So if there's, you know, Crew Week's regatta, if there's a race coming up, it'll be kind of noticing the public of when that might be happening. So if a particular weekend you might not want to drive down Route 27, you'll have a little bit of notice. Planting plan. I won't get into it crazy unless you really want me to, but there is linden trees are the street trees along the edge. This is the pollinator habitat garden that we put in that corner. A lot of great stuff happening in this living shoreline section with sisleria, or not sisleria, Spartina and sea lavender, some penicetum, some native coastal grasses. And basically what we did, and I'll explain here in a second, is we looked at what's working currently out there, and then we tried to mimic that as best as we can because that's, if it's currently living, it's our best chance for success. Now the living shoreline. So this is AECom's plan, and then we will have some sections to show you as well. So what we looked at is what does work. And I'll zoom in here on the point. So this is the very tip of the peninsula. This stone wall symbol that exists, right? So that's an existing wall that's around the perimeter. The grading, as you can see, kind of runs through. So this is our negative 2 contour. This is our negative 1 contour, our 0 contour. So it runs basically through the wall. The walls are freestanding, if you will. The water just flows through the wall back and forth. So everything inside of the wall, we have some beautiful native marsh growing. This whole swath here is Spartina. This is sea lavender. Right outside the wall, where we don't have any protection from that, at the exact same elevation, we have nothing growing. And so we came to look at pretty quickly, and this is an image of that exact area, is we have a beautiful native marsh growing in absolutely horrific soils, right? That wasn't planted by anybody. It's native seed that has come downstream. It's rooted and it's growing really, really well in areas that has just enough protection, both from the waves and the ice, to be able to allow it to grow. And this is all very elevation-dependent, right? Spartina exists from like 0 to 1, and sea lavender is from 1 to 2. At those same elevations out here where we don't have that protection, we get nothing. So the strategy for the living shoreline was to create what's called a rock sill, which is basically kind of a fancy name for a rock wall that goes along that same elevation where the current rock kind of works already. And that will slow and break that wave energy as it comes in. And these are not massive waves. These are not, you know, surfing waves. This is just the wind fetch waves. As it comes in, breaks that wave energy so that we have calm waters behind. It allows for the sediment that's in that water column to drop and be able to deposit, building a larger marsh behind it. To encourage that marsh to grow quicker, we're actually seeding the backside of the sill with some soil bags and then some Spartina. And as I'll show you in a second, with mussels as well. The mussels out here and the symbiotic relationship between the mussels and the Spartina is amazing. You need both basically to have either one succeed. So we're planning to seed it with native mussels from the site. In this location, because we don't need to cover the ground, we're actually proposing to not plant anything in this range and let nature do its thing. We think that once we give it enough protection to break that wave energy, then naturally, it will infill the rest of that marsh. Up here, there's already existing Spartina and some existing marsh, and then we infill in between the bits as we go up the hill. And then we regrade this slope. I should have mentioned that a little sooner. Right now, there's a very steep bank there. Again, it was just fill pushed out to the edge and left as a cliff, and it's been eroded at the bottom. So we're going to regrade that into a sustainable slope that you can see there with the walk at the top.
Excuse me, Chad, what is the elevation of the riprap or your...
I'll show you in just, I have a section. I can show it really clearly for you, yep. On this side, because again, this is what we call a glass beach, we don't want to have the risk of having any of that at the surface. This is what we're doing, an actual marsh creation. So we're actually placing soil there to be able to then put the plants in and grow the marsh from day one, as opposed to letting nature try to do it over the next couple of years. So in this location, we're doing marsh creation. And a couple of images of what it looks like kindly of right now. This is what that mussel-Spartina combination looks like, right? So everything is intertwined, huge populations of mussels and the Spartina. When they mass together, they form almost like a reef, and you can see how that does protect the coast. What we need is a little bit more protection out here so this can continue to grow forward, and we get a very large marsh. What we do see, besides the sill, as sea level comes up, the longer marshes that we can get as the waves come through that fetch, it just drags down the energy and it dissipates the energy even just going through the marsh. So the goal is to expand that low marsh as much as possible. That's another example of the Spartina and the mussels growing together in between rocks. What I loved about this picture is that the majority of the soil there is brick, right? It's just the leftover that's been pushed into the water. In addition to mussels, we also have oysters. That's an oyster growing out there right now. None of this, all I should mention, all the shellfish is not for shellfishing. It's not for public consumption. It is too far upstream where there is no testing for the water quality because it doesn't get enough flush. And obviously, on this site where we do have contamination, we definitely would discourage it anyways. And then just so you can understand what I'm talking about when I say glass beach, this is glass beach. So those are not rocks. Those are all, you know, pieces of glass. So you can see the bottle, the bottle, the bottle. All these, those are not, you know, that's...
Those are bottle dump.
That's, it's bottles, it's panes of glass. It's just a lot of stuff that we don't want the public out there walking on. So that's why we're doing a marsh creation on top of that.
Excuse me, will you have signage indicating that foraging the mussels is...
Yes.
Cool.
Yep. Yep. This is the technical section of the living shorelines. And then the next, this is, we put some color on it just to help define it. So this first top section, which I'll zoom in, this is that northern section where we're cutting back this slope already. So as I zoom in, this is the rock sill that's proposed. You can see mean-low water. The sill is mostly out of the water. Mean-high water, just a little bit of it's exposed. And then mean-high water with 20 inches of sea level rise, the whole thing's exposed at the highest, normal high-water mark. Then, as I mentioned, we're planting the soil bag behind it with Spartina planted within it. The mussel socks get placed on either side of it so that from, hopefully from day one, we get Spartina and mussels commingling to begin with and starting to populate that sill. This is the zone where we're leaving it unplanted to let nature fill it in. And then as we start moving up the slope again, we do supplement with more Spartina, more mussel socks, some other plants as we come up and out of the water column and start going up the new coastal bluff. And then what I failed to mention too was we do have log protection. So we do have some scour that happens above the height of the existing rock wall, which is about the same height as where our sill is proposed. The water that comes across there, and especially the ice in the wintertime, we get some scour right at this elevation, elevation 2.57. We get, we have an area of bare soil all along the edge. So the proposal there is to actually place actual logs parallel to the shore to be able to provide that energy break, stop the ice from scouring, and provide a little bit more protection for the plants that grow right behind it. In this location, you can see the existing grade is that steep bank up. This is where we're cutting into that hillside to be able to provide a more natural slope that is sustainable over time, and we have done it so that, again, with that sea level rise as it comes up and that water starts to lap at it, we won't get erosion in that point. I will mention that we do expect this, none of this is a hard, permanent structure. We expect the living shoreline to be a living, breathing thing. That's the whole idea. So it will change over time. There will be years when there might be a whole lot of one species of marsh and a year when there's something else growing, and there might be times when we get erosion. And all of that is part of the plan that's tried to be built into this so that it can self-sustain itself over time as opposed to putting in hardened structures. On the glass beach side, this is the section, so again, similar sill section, the same kind of planting the bottom of the sill. But then you can see the existing grade down here is the dash line and all of the fill that we're placing to do the marsh creation to cover that glass and get a marsh growing as we work our way up the slope. And the same log protection at that same point, and then up to the edge of what we're calling the kind of coastal bluff, even though it's not truly that, yep.
What kind of trees are the logs?
Good question. We have not specified what kind of trees are the logs.
Because depending on what species, you could have quite an unliving shoreline, so they rot away quickly.
Well, and so we want them...
Might be a nice thing to have.
Exactly. That's, so we want, this is not like a cedar log, which we expect to last forever. We want this to be, to decompose over time. Part of that, it is, it is an approved part of living shoreline design. We also saw work actually on the site kind of accidentally, right? So you had that, you know, the barge that was right next door to the north that fell into the water. Most of it was cleaned up. There were a few pieces that were left over. Those pieces did wash up onto the shore of this parcel. And when they obviously washed up parallel to the shore, and right behind it, Spartina started growing, right? So just that little bit of protection allows for the native marsh to start growing. So that's the whole idea behind those.
Can you point out on that cross-section where Deep might have jurisdiction and where the Corps of Engineers might have jurisdiction?
Excellent point. Deep is, well, I can show you on the plan a little bit better. So Deep's jurisdiction line is this dash line right here. The CJL, as you can see, it labeled right there. It runs all the way along there. For the most part, the logs where they're placed is right at that CJL line. The only difference is on this edge where we're actually pushing out in, and so the CJL is going to move landward, or, excuse me, waterward when we're done. But obviously, they'll have jurisdiction up to their current mark right now. And so we'll be going through all of those regulatory permits with them as well.
How about the Corps?
Absolutely, yep, both. And the Corps is involved primarily because of the channel.
Right.
So the channel, you can just see the edge of it here. This dock does extend to within their, it's not in the channel, but it's within their review area of the channel. We have had, Mark from First Water Engineering has had discussions with them. They've sent plans. They've reviewed them, and we had the preliminary determination that they think it's fine because that's essentially the last can, which isn't on the survey, is right about here. So the federal channel ends. This doesn't encroach into the channel, and they look at it because it's for public access as a good thing to do.
They'll also take a really close look at any native species that are in there, particularly any that are nearing extinction. And it stopped a couple of projects with subaquous facilities like this in Hartford just because of that. So early conversations are encouraged. I like the plan. I think it makes sense, and it is very appropriate for that area. But if they discover that the short-nosed sturgeon is nesting in that area...
Yeah. We have, we have had them out to the site. We also had DEP was out onsite with us, and I say like the entire team of DEP, all the different divisions came. Last week, we met them out there and reviewed everything with them as well. And then we also had Rich Sinarsky, when he's done all of our identification onsite, as well as our sub-aquatic identification to look for anything that could trigger any of those things. So far, we have not found anything that would not allow us to do this.
Great. Early conversations are smart. And also, the deposition of material in a navigable waterway that you're proposing, again, makes all the sense in the world, and I really do like that proposal. Early discussions on deposition of material also, so they know it's coming.
Yep, yep. All right, so that's, I'll say effectively, the living shoreline. All right, so that's, I'll say effectively the living shoreline. Did I have it?
Okay.
Well, I'll show you this image. Just talking about the ice scour and how high tide gets up. I know that we, none of us probably recognize this anymore, but this was ice a few years ago on the site. So this is right down here. I'm basically standing here looking out this way. So you can see, the top of the wall is right there and in line with that kind of ice break. But we do get ice that comes over the top. And as it is pushed in with wind, we get that scour right along that edge. And what that looks like here is that bare soil you see right along there. That's that elevation 2.5 where we get that scour happening, and that's where we're putting the logs. That's the living shoreline. So then, probably what most people are here for, the boathouse. This is the first floor plans of the boathouse. This is the Lovelace House. Again, so Route 27 is now kind of at the bottom of the page. The Lovelace House is picked up and moved. You can see the renovated interior floor plan to basically be, you know, a large common area as well as then a changing room for all the rowers to come and go. This is the vestibule, the connector between the two, and the boathouse itself. Stairs, egress. This, because it is lower at that elevation nine-ish, you know, up to the 13, we have stairs and an elevator lift that goes, serves back and forth. This is that bathroom that I mentioned in the corner closest to the park to serve the park. Second floor plans. The house has basically got some office space in the upstairs. It's, the existing staircase up. Nothing, no second floor over the connector piece. And then within the boathouse, it's a training exercise room. So those are all the ERGs stationed up there. They've got some storage rooms, some weight rack space, and then a balcony that overlooks the water because it's going to be an absolutely gorgeous place to watch the Mystic Riverfront. 2D elevations of the building. This is the Route 27 side on the top. So again, the Lovelace House repositioned. I will note that we're leaving per SHIPO requirements, all the siding has to basically be replaced in kind as best as we can. The front door stays. Although, if you will pay attention in the floor plan, there's no door there, and there's a whole bunch of bathrooms along there. So the door is inoperable, but we are required to leave it there. It is a faux door as well as faux windows because we don't want those into the changing room either. But we're required to make that facade stay the same. And then, per National Interior Standards for Historic Structures, they want the separation between, you know, new and old to be starkly different. So this is the glass connector between the two. And then the boathouse itself. This was intentionally designed to look like a barn that could have been associated with the building from that time period. And it was intentionally done with a roof slope down to the road to minimize the mass of the building from Route 27. Because it is a large building and it would be larger, significantly larger than the house itself, the way you angle and pitch the roofs is important. And so this way, it looks much more appropriate from the roadside. This is the riverside, again, boathouse. You can see the names there, the Jim Deeds Rowing Center and the Hart Perry Boathouse on both sides. This is the upper story balcony area, the boat bays, the connector. We do have some large seating steps, if you will, going up to the connector in the middle as well as then AD access that wraps around the building to get up from the roadside elevation to the first floor of the building. The north-south elevations, this is the elevation facing the parking lot. So as I mentioned, they've got the Stonington S and Oars at the top of that peak. You know, roof pitch, again, this is done intentionally so that from the roadside, it looks de minimis as opposed to if this was the facade facing the road, it would be a little more imposing. And then this is the north facade. So if you're driving south on Route 27, this is what you see. SHIPO required us to put the building in that location, so it was the first thing that you would see if you're driving into town. Building materials. I won't go through all of them, but you can kind of get the idea of the materials. This is obviously as close to the representation of the existing Lovelace House as we can put back. The connector and then the rowing center. A couple renderings on hopefully what it can look like. You can see the stadium seating right outside. This is that front corner entry as you come in. You can see the drop-off area, the dock in the background, the boathouse with some lights on the side of it. So we intentionally, I should have mentioned in the lighting, the lighting, street lighting is along the street. We intentionally don't have any lights in the center island of the parking lot because as you're coming in with the boats, so those boats are 60 feet long on a trailer, it takes a big swing to get the boats in and out. And the boats, the bow and the stern actually stick off quite a ways off either end of the trailer. And if you're coming in, it's pretty easy to take off one or the other if there's a light pole in the wrong location. And so we've intentionally left all those high things out of the center island of the parking area.
Are the buildings fire suppressed?
No. Where's the, the freestanding sign is not shown in that rendering. It would be located right about, right here.
Then can you use microphone, please? Thanks.
The height of the sign?
Let me find it for you. Five foot six high, mounted two feet off the ground and four foot two inches wide.
Is the siding board and batten, is it natural cedar? Will that be finished or just?
I will let Mike answer.
It's a natural cedar product. It'll be unfinished, we'll put a weathering stain on it.
Excuse me, could you come up and use the microphone? I hate to do that to you. Thank you.
So as Chad stated, the exterior of the house will be the existing cedar siding painted to match the current view. The boathouse itself, we're looking at a cedar TNG product with a batten over the top of it. It's just a natural finish that weathers it to kind of a natural brown. So that's a kind of representation of the color of the boathouse. But it'll take it a few years to get there.
Thank you.
Last couple of things I should mention. I do have the letter, the official notice that was sent out to the abutters and the certified copy for the mailing. I don't know, we received today at about lunchtime, the letters from DEP. So I don't know if those made it into your packets or not, but they, I can give them to you as copies. We got one as far as the map amendment for the zone change. Yeah, that's consistent. The change is consistent with their coastal management. The other letter is about the site plan portion of it. They basically commend the town for going to this length for this type of a project. They do note all of the additional requirements that we're going to have to go through for DEP. And they mentioned the one for structures dredging and fill and flood management and remediation. And they gave us direct contacts for all those people. So we can submit, I'll give you all of them. All of those for the record. Thank you. As I did mention, we do have the full drainage report from Weston and Sampson. Should have been able to be attached. Nothing major. The only thing I would point out, if you really, you know, want to get technical on the stormwater drainage, is normally we try to get one foot of clearance between the groundwater and where the bottom of the infiltrator can be. In this instance, we're really, normally we want to get two feet, excuse me. This instance, we can only get one foot of separation between the bottom of the infiltrator and the typical groundwater location. We did talk about that with the engine, the town engineer. He was okay with it. Again, given the circumstances as to elevations, where groundwater is, where our final surface can be, how we can pitch water to a low point, collect it, treat it, get it into an infiltrator and get it back out of an infiltrator, we're very limited on our actual vertical clearances there. And so he was all right with that change. And then, lastly, I would just say, the impact statements. If you want me to quickly go through some of those as far as the master plan amendment application we're required to either ask for waivers or require a reply. The fiscal impact, we are asking for a waiver because the town, the property is owned by the town and the building will be operated by the nonprofit, and there's no residential component to the project. Therefore, no school age children to be added to the population. And the project will add open space and coastal access to all residents of the town. Traffic impact, we are asking for a waiver. Again, this parking lot has been assessed and will continue to be assessed by OSTA and in conjunction with a hotel project right next door. So we feel that's a highly investigative process, I'll say, going through OSTA. And they really look at all the numbers and greater than we can provide you in just a traffic report. Roads and drainage, we do have a response for that. So we have provided a complete drainage report, provided by an engineer. Shows that 100% of the stormwater can be treated from all the impervious surfaces. We do have a photometric plan. We have designed it to be minimum levels of light for safety and aiming everything down as needed. All the parking and circulation are designed in accordance with town and state guidelines. And there are sufficient water and utilities on site to service the building. Cultural impact, we are not asking for a waiver. We have a very lengthy response as to why we think this improves the culture, both of the historic and environmental culture and aesthetics and heritage of the town of Stonington. And then, the maintenance of public amenities is significant. Compatible with public views is, I think, pretty obvious that we're trying to improve all the public views to this project. Reinforcement of the street building and massing patterns. As I explained, why we had to move the building, SHIPO required us to move it where it had to go. And we wanted it as close to be able to repeat that massing pattern. And then we did the same thing with the boathouse building by turning it and making it the smaller side face the road, again, to reinforce those historic massing patterns and provide as much open space for public view through to the river. And then protection of it and compatibility with local significant historic sites, visitors and features. We think this project is supporting all of those and creating more. And there have been no archaeologically significant resources identified on this site historically. Natural resources. Again, I think we're doing everything to enhance the natural resources as much as possible, turn what is a brownfield site into what should be a showpiece for both the Stonington as well as all of the state and how to do responsible shoreline coastal development. So I won't read that whole thing. But that's the last part of the responses for that. I won't go through the CAM. Again, I think the letter from DEP, although you haven't seen it, does, you know, it speaks positively to the project as well. And I think with that, I have the rest of the slides of all the technical details and stuff like that, but I didn't think we'd go through that unless you have specific questions.
Questions for the board?
I just have one question, and it's a great plan.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
The second quarter is, it's basically a training facility, storage facility. We've met with local fire officials and both the architects and fire officials feel like because of its size and its use, it does not require sprinklers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When there's an event or a race, how many people usually show up? Like, what's the attendance?
So we've had an ongoing race called Coast Weeks, which is our biggest event. And that usually brings about 300 rowers into that event and support people as well. At Stonington High School, when we row, it's typically our high school team with one or two other teams. Most of the teams are similar size to us, 40, 60 kids. So usually, it's a couple buses and a couple trailers. The kids come in. They're predominantly row in the spring and the fall. So it's really before the seaport is moving. So there's open spaces in the parking lot. So the public doesn't really see much when we do it. It doesn't really sow down traffic at all, has no real impact. A lot of the rowers row early in the morning or late in the evening. So we're typically on and off the water, you know, before the seaport opens and after they close. So again, for the last 25 years, we use parking lots and seaports because they don't really care. They're usually vague that we're working in and out of them.
Any issues with the hotel using the parking there? Any?
No, well, again, I'll say the parking lot will be fully reviewed as part of the park by OSTA as well. Our recommendation right now is just what we're showing. Right in, right out for this. We intentionally want to have southbound traffic coming down Route 27 going just to the hotel to be able to turn in in this driveway and then turn in to go to the main driveway of the hotel. And we want the park entrance for people dropping off or coming to the park to be able to turn to this driveway right now and be able to go through. We think this is the safest, best use of the dual driveways. There has been discussion about should it be a one-way in and a one-way out? But that would force all traffic through here. We don't think that's the safest. However, OSTA has the final say. And so they'll be the ones to tell us what we have to do. This is what we think, this is what we're recommending as our best recommendation.
Thank you.
Actually, quick follow-up question on that. Will there be signs, you know, directing on the roadways? So people know, okay, here you're going for the boathouse and there you're going for the hotel?
Yes, on the signage plan, there's a whole bunch of directional signage required by DEOT for which ways are the one-ways, which is the no left turns. All of that is on there. I didn't jump into all those, but yes, those are on the plans.
Okay, thank you. Question, actually a comment more than a question. This probably is the most detailed set of plans I've looked at since I've been appointed to this commission in the last three years. So kudos to all the design people listed on the front page, Kent Frost, Weston and Sampson, AECOM, all groups I've worked with before, top-notch groups, for assembling such a detailed set of plans. I don't have a single question except one point. I would like to see a photometric plan included. And I'm sure you did one. And just bind it into the plans because infiltration or exfiltration of light off a site like this is very important to all of us, particularly in this area, particularly out over the water. And your description was enough for me for tonight. But kudos also to the town's leadership who oversaw and the preparation of these plans and bringing them forward. It's the most detailed presentation I've seen since I've been on this commission.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I still have a couple. And I do like the planning, and you did a great job. But it's about the lighting. You know how I am about the lighting? So, you know, the bolts, the short lights that are-
Ballast lights?
Right. How many are there going to be and where are they placed? I kind of missed that.
Yep, so that, these little rings. So from a photometric perspective, the ballast light is right there. The .25 foot candle, right, which is a very small amount of light, .25 foot candle is that red ring.
Okay.
Right, and so then the next ballast light is 50 feet away. And that's the .25 foot candle. So we barely get .25 foot candle spread from one side of the walk to the other side of the walk. So we don't, these are not bright lights shedding a ton of light. Will you see the glimmer of that light? Yes. You know, and you'll see the pool of light where it hits the ground plane, but it's not going to be, you know, it's not a red fluorescent strip up on the entire side of the building.
Right, but right now, it's dark. So how many are there?
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, 10. 10 that have lights. And again, we spread them out quite a bit so that we can have pools of light from one to another. Worked with the police commission so that they could have what they felt was a safe amount of light for them to be able to patrol as they drove by.
So was one of the options that the light is a semi-circle towards this, towards the street or the internal portion of the property versus the water?
We had, I believe, one of the fixtures that the committee did review cast light in one direction, but it was the direction towards the water. Because of the light placement on the landward side of the walk, we want the lights on the back side of the walk that the light would have to spill onto the walking surface, which is on the water side of the light. So those instances where we had a cutoff on one side, it was still spilling towards the water side. And I guess it would depend on what your view is because up here it'd be to the north and here it'd be to the east and over here-
Right, from the water, I'm thinking from the water. And the reason I ask is because my understanding of the police commission was that they were worried about people in the park, not necessarily the water.
Well, it was, yeah, I mean, we expect people to be, if they're in the park, probably on the sidewalk, on the sidewalk, but they could be anywhere. But again, if the light is going, it's not going to be light enough to see somebody from the light. It's going to be more of, you'll see a dark shadow walk in front of the light behind them. Because that's the level of light we're looking at.
Okay.
It's not like a spotlight that they're going to see an individual, you're just going to see a shadow moving in front of you.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, I had to be honest with you, and you know, because you went through the whole thing with the hotel. You know, that section, you know, from the water is very dark, and so, you know, now there's going to be, you know, this development, which is minor development, don't get me wrong, but you're going to have those lights, kind of a ring of lights. Then you're going to have the hotel and the lights associated with that. So holistically, you are changing that whole section of the river from a night perspective. Again, the building is beautiful, you've definitely kept it in, you know, the tone that everybody was looking for. I just wondered if there was another way to deal with the lighting.
I would say, you know, currently there's, or currently there was, the Latitude Restaurant, it was a two-story building, they had the tent outside with the lights all summer long. That was well-lit and probably overly lit compared to what the hotel should be. Here, we obviously had a house and a big garage next to it that did have some lights on it and would have lights in it when people occupied it. And then you still have the Rossi Mill above and behind it that does have windows along the whole facade, not lit a ton, but it does, it's not like it's a complete dark sky environment, right? And you have all the streetlights there, you have the neighborhood, all the residential houses that start lining up. So I'm definitely, we don't want light pollution, 100%, I agree with you. We tried to put the minimal amount of light we could out there to provide a safe public park.
That's the lowest light possible.
Yeah, that's true, and a great point. We intentionally did the three-foot baller light as opposed to, one of the options was, you know, a 12-foot pole light, you know, that we could have put that all along the shore, and that would be a very different effect.
It'd be a very different comment.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
A question. Your walkways does double duty as access to the boat ramp? Is that correct?
This over here, correct, yep.
So if I wanted to launch a small boat, I would have to be dragging it down the walkway to the ramp, is that correct?
Yep, you would, if you were dropping off along here, I mean, there's nothing to stop you from walking across the lawn.
No, 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 no.
But if you wanted to, say you were dropping it off on your little dolly carrier, you had a two-wheel, you could put it on and drag it across, you most likely would come down through here, come through the bollards, down here, drag it down the ramp, launch it, tie it up here, and then take your dolly back to the car.
So you wouldn't have somebody backing their Chevy Suburban down that walkway to launch a boat?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, that's why the bollards are there, is to keep people out from doing that. We do, this is not a car, we do not want any cars backing down this.
So quite small boats.
Rooftop only. Rooftop carrier.
I was supposed to say right about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Brad? The floating docks, they stay in year-round?
No.
Do you pull them out?
They probably will get pulled.
And where do you store them?
Right now, they get stored on-site. We'll look for a location where they can be stored, or possibly, we'll talk to the seaport about, there is some, they do some of their floating tied up for the winter. They won't be, like, usable for the winter. This one potentially, depending on how it gets final designed, we have seen them where they just lift the whole thing and bolt it to the pier high out of the water column. That could be an option. I should have noted that this, the crew dock won't have the piles because of the way rowing works, and you need the oars for launching back and forth. So there's an elastomeric anchor system way out there so that you don't see any of the piles associated with a normal coastal pier.
And what will be the depth at low water, at low tide rather?
Let me...
It's going to be pretty darn shallow, right?
It's not, well, it depends on where you are, right? So this is our negative five contour.
Okay, I didn't see it, yep.
Yeah, and negative four, so that we get that depth that we need over the, you know, so we're not sitting on the bottom. And that's why some of these ramps are so long to get out to that depth.
I figured. And those are the real low, low ramps.
This is a very low-profile crew dock.
Okay. Any other questions? And I think I forgot to state who was seated for this public hearing. So just for the record, in case I'm losing it, Brian Daisy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Lynn Conway. Any other questions before we go to the public hearing?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. I know that the main crosswalk is over by the parking lot. Are you guys thinking that there might be another crosswalk being put in?
We are, there's discussions and requests right now to DOT to put, well, I can't see it. There's two crosswalks at that light currently, and the main one is on the south side. We're asking for one to be added on the north side so that people don't have to kind of go the long way around.
Yeah, okay, great.
That would help with the new Rossi Mill entrance way, correct?
Yep, they're in the process of redesign, they, meaning DOT's, in the process of redesigning that intersection, so we're asking for that to be added.
Nice.
So now it's going to go to public comment. Oh, we're not done yet. We're getting close.
Mr. Chairman, is this for or against, or just general?
General comments.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the design team. It really is a super project, and I'm very much in favor, but I just, I did want to speak to one point. I'm here to speak about future uses of this park, which I don't think have been given enough consideration. In 2015, in the approval for the Coogan Farm property just up the street from this project, PCC stipulated that the applicant would need to return to the commission prior to the schedule of any third-party or private events. Two to three years later, they did just that, and that board, which some of you sat on, by the way, put some pretty strict restrictions on the size and frequency of third-party events there. There were concerns about traffic and parking, as well as the appropriateness of using that site as an event venue. The Board of Police Commissioners had their concerns as well, and I have attached their letter. I hope that this commission will also stipulate that this applicant shall return to the PCC before any private events are allowed on this site. I actually hope that you will go one step further and require a public hearing before any approval is given for this type of use. The reason that I think that the public hearing requirement is appropriate in this case is the fact that this is a publicly-owned property. It would only be fair to the taxpayers who have generously ponied up to purchase and build out this public asset to have a say in all of its potential uses going forward. I have attached copies of the letter from the Board of Police Commissioners and the stipulations from the Coogan Farm special use permit. I have also attached the minutes from the PCC meeting of January 16, 2018, where the new stipulations for the events of the farm are codified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Laura Graham.
Can you hear me? Does that work? Okay. I'm Laura Graham, 2 Maust Street, Pocketuck. As a candidate for first-electman, please allow me to go on public record in support of this exceptionally well-conceived project. If I were to have the privilege to serve, I would work energetically to make sure it is fully funded and realized. It is a common belief that design by committee is not a good thing, but having followed this project closely since its conception, I would like to point out how much this project has improved through time. Congratulations, Stonington, on coming together to create a project that is sensitive to and will benefit so many.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Madam Secretary. Rob Simmons, 268 North Main Street, Stonington. I rise in support of the application for the creation of the Mystic River Boathouse Park. Seven years ago this month, a small group of Stonington residents from Mystic Village, Pocketuck Village, the borough, and elsewhere around the town, met at Latitude 41 Restaurant in Mystic to discuss a dream, a dream, a boathouse park for community rowing and a permanent space for the Stonington High School crew, most of whom have gone home. I don't blame them. I wish I had too. We had a plan, and with the overwhelming support of the town and the assistance of the Trust for Public Land, we secured this 1.5-acre riverfront property that was a part of the former Rossi Mill adjacent to the Mystic Seaport. At the time, the Westerly Sun editorialized and said, "Stonington residents will have the opportunity to leave a legacy for generations to come." A legacy for generations to come. Now here we are, many years later, after many challenges, right next, and obstacles and disappointments, standing on the cusp of that legacy. So now it lies with you to say yes or no, or maybe yes with a stipulation or two, not too many, I hope. And I encourage you to say yes, and give the community the opportunity to go forward to secure the legacy and realize the dream. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dylan Platt.
I want to start by saying that I am neither a candidate for first-electman or a previous first-electman. Maybe one day, 2052.
Now you are, now you are.
Yeah, maybe, maybe one day. But I just want to speak on behalf of the boys' crew team. I am the current captain of the boys' crew team. I'm a senior on the team. And I really just want to talk to the points that were brought up earlier about how crew is really a sport that can have a profound impact on a lot of people, and I know that serving as captain of the crew team, I've seen it change a lot of people who I've been responsible for over the last year. And I really just want to thank the board, Mr. Chairman, and all the work that you guys have done to, you know, bring this project to fruition. And I hope that you vote yes, because I don't know if you followed our results recently, but we've been pretty fast on the water, and we actually have an even faster group of guys coming up, freshmen and sophomores, so. I hope that one day, we'll come here and bring you guys a gold medal for all the work that you've done to support us along the way, but for now, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys have done and continuing to support our team, and I hope that you vote yes on this side, incredible project that was put together. So, thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up? Would anybody else like to have a chance at the microphone? For, against, general comments?
My name is Dr. Bigel Morris. I've been a resident of Stonington and a homeowner since 1970, and I just want to say how encouraged I am that this project is going forward. I know there will be some hurdles to overcome, but I encourage you very much to overcome those hurdles. I have a foot in three worlds. I'm a rower. I have six children and 10 grandchildren who are not rowers, but I want them to have access to the Mystic River. The Mystic River is a gem. I don't know how much you appreciate it, but if you've rowed in rivers like the Schoke Hill or the Charles or the Connecticut River, you know what hazards there are in a real river. The Mystic River is more of an estuary than a river. It always has water, it doesn't have debris, it doesn't have boat traffic, and it's just a gem for small boaters, and I encourage you, vote yes, please.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Oh, one hand in the back.
I'm resident in Pocketuck. I'm on the team currently, my brother was earlier, and I was at one of the first meetings where they voted to actually start working on developing this park. I've been waiting for a while to see something actually happen, and seeing all the pictures we have of it, really impressive. Like to thank them for their work. I'd like to thank you guys for actually listening to what they have to say. I just want to say, I'm glad it's an opportunity not only for rowers and the crew team, but also for the rest of the community with the boat launch we have there for things like kayaks, because I know, like, I like to kayak, but there's not many places around here, especially for, you know, coastal town. So I'd like to say thank you, and I would also like to re-say, please vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Hi, thank you for the lesson in coastal resilience and responsible coastal development. My name is Maggie Favredi. I live at 19 Whitehall Landing in Stonington. I'm a rower. I'm also trained and expert in community resilience and well-being, climate change and health specifically. And all of the research indicates that people are healthier, the community is healthier, we can deal with the mental health challenges that the trials and tribulations of climate change bring us better when we have access to the river, to other natural resources, in this case, are one of our greatest assets in this community. So please vote yes, we'll all be better off for it.
Thank you. Would you like to have a rebuttal, Chad, to anything? Do you want to start?
Thank you all. I know it's very late. Just to clarify one point, just in case you are considering any sort of stipulations, when we worked on our lease, we obviously had a lot of conversations about use and what uses would be appropriate and back and forth, and we brought in a lot of different partners. And one thing just to point out that might be of interest to you, Board, is that the police commission, working with the police department, has a whole new process now that you might be aware of for reviewing events, and when it hits a certain level, and they have different ratings and rankings, and so any event that will have an impact on traffic generation would have to go before the police commission, so there would be an obstacle opportunity for public comment should, say, the Stonington Community Rowing Center want to have a regatta or want to have some sort of large-scale event there. So just to be sure it is clear, there is still really good checks and balances without any sort of additional stipulation.
But there aren't any weddings in the plan or that sort of thing, reunions or...
No weddings.
So no live, no live music?
If I could just say a couple things. We've worked really hard, and again, we've had some time to put this together. So we've reached out to a number of different organizations in town, and we are working now very closely with the Denison, the Quapssus Nature Center, to provide educational opportunities for them. We're working very hard with the seaport to create opportunities for them. We have a relationship with the YMCA to provide opportunities with them. This is a big building, and it should get utilized. It is a town building, it should get utilized to its fullest extent, and our belief is the best way to do that is to let the public have access to it. So for our rowing programs, we're going to use it a percentage of the time, but our expectation is that the Parks and Rec Department will be hosting things there. This will be a very, very nice asset for the town of Stonington, and I'd be concerned about if we try and over-regulate how it's used. You look at the sports courts at the high school, for a long time, those were the domain of the high school, and now Richie's done a very good job with Parks and Rec to provide opportunities for pickleball and tennis and basketball and other groups to come and use them, and that's really our whole intent here, is let's create a community center based on the water where people can get access to the river to go canoeing, kayaking, paddleboarding, rowing. If they want to yoga in the park through the Parks and Rec Department, great, that's an excellent opportunity. So I just want to make sure that we're not, and I understand neighborhood concern of too much traffic, too many people, all those types of things, but I think that can be easily managed.
I have a question. You're familiar with the Small Boat Association in Stonington Borough Harbor?
Absolutely.
Could you do something like that at this facility to have a storage rack for small kayaks and boats?
It's kind of a small space, so we're...
I figured, but I didn't know, has that been considered?
It's in the thought process, we've talked about it, we're trying not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but again, one of the nice things is the seaport has assets to things like that there. They have a wholesaling center that's a stone's throw away from there, so there may be some kind of further relationships that we develop. It could be a dock-based situation. It could be a dock-based situation where at some point we set up a dock that has boats on it that people can easily access from the park. But it is only an acre and a half. So we're trying not to cover the whole thing with structures, so.
I think it's a very ambitious and extremely well-thought-out plan. Thank you guys for your time. Any other questions? Clifton, your staff input?
I don't have any other staff input. I will say I did receive additional nine letters and support that I'll be adding to the record for this, too. So I'll just add that to the pile.
And are we all right with the town engineer?
Yes, so I did receive the town engineer's comments today. And the only, the only mention that's additional onto this is that the applicant provide a post-construction certification related to the drainage system. But that's, again, pretty standard process.
And Chuck, you don't have any drainage questions?
No.
I'm amazed.
If I could say one more thing, just quickly. I think Chad Frost has probably 100 hours of pro bono work for every hour he's been paid for this job. This is a labor of love for Chad. And I think it comes through in all the design work he's done. He's been with us from the very beginning. He and I have been working on this. And, you know, I'm very happy that you had that response because it goes to this man right here.
So I have one other question, just to address one of the comments from the public. Is there any intention for renting the space or the property out? So you talked about collaboration. You talked about other departments within the community, et cetera. I'm specifically asking about renting it out to other parties, party on the lawn, kind of thing.
We have no jurisdiction over the land. So that's the town. So that'll be managed by...
Just like if somebody wants to use the facilities down in Stonington Borough, the green's there, right? Or they want to use Downey Park. We have a whole, again, process in place that has to go through the Board of Selectmen, opportunities for public comment, depending on the traffic generation, police commission. So if somebody did want to use this public property, just like with any of our others, it'd be the exact same process that would have to be followed, where there's always an opportunity for public input, to provide insurance, they have to meet certain stipulations. So it wouldn't be any different than any of those other town parcels from the land perspective.
Thank you. And I do want to make a point is on our staff report, it says no comment on the architectural design review board. That actually meant they approved it.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
That threw me for a loop.
They should have approved it.
I did check. It's approved. That was another tip of the hat, that everything was through.
Move to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the decision on design waivers as requested. There's five waivers. The landscape architect did an excellent job of explaining why each one was worthy of our approval. They begin on page 56. And I move the approval of the waivers requested.
Thank you, Chuck. This is your second.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ryan. Further discussion on the waivers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the decision on the zone change as stipulated in the 70-page report and for the reasons stipulated in the 70-page report.
Seconded.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move a positive decision on the coastal area management application for the reasons stipulated in the town planners' report with all the comments. And I'm not putting any stipulations on this. I'm going to reserve them till the last site plan approval stipulation.
Seconded.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the decision on the site plan application. And as with the following stipulations. The final site plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And I'm going to slightly modify the second recommended approval to include one additional agency, which we talked about tonight. Alterations to the proposed site, this is the second stipulation. Alterations to the proposed site, following comments from Connecticut DEP, Connecticut DOT slash OSTA. He mentioned that they're in front of OSTA right now. That's the Office of Traffic Safety. And also the Corps of Engineers, who I think you stipulated has jurisdiction. And we would want to hear from them. Shall be reviewed and approved by TOSA.
Seconded.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations. With the board? With the board? Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Five-minute break? Alrighty, let's roll with the last public hearing tonight. Lynn, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I did something. I'm sorry. I thought I pushed the button. Special use permit application for onsite placement of two mobile training trailers to facilitate training for firefighters. Property located on Main Street, Old Mystic Assessor's Map, 166, Block 6, Lot 11, Zone RA 20.
Thank you, Lynn. Seated for this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Philbrick, Fred Deitman, and Lynn Conway. We'll hear from the applicant, then any public comment, and then rebuttal if you need it. Some questions from the board, and hopefully we can get to a vote this evening. All yours.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Oh, no problem. I'm used to the long meetings. Thank you for having me tonight. This has been a long process. I'm just going to give you a real quick background on the department. The Old Mystic Fire Department was formed in 1837. We have a 26-square-mile fire district. About three-quarters of that is in the town of Stonington. The other quarter is in the town of Groton. We're the busiest department in Stonington, second busiest in Groton. We have 11 full-time employees, 52 volunteers. And we're known for our training programs and our technical rescue team. Our technical rescue team responds throughout the region for technical rescue calls, dive, high angle, trench, et cetera. 1946, we built the firehouse. 1946 is when we put the first single-story station across from the property that we're talking about tonight. And in 1961, we purchased the property that we're talking about tonight after about, from the history that I've heard from the older members of after about eight years of Pinaco Games and the firehouse that came from Mr. Fine Mallet. So we've been pretty much using this site across from the station since 1961 for different types of training activities for the department. In 2002, we were fortunate enough, we had an opportunity to lease eight acres of land from the state of Connecticut on the Groton side of our district, the former oral school property. So we had one trailer across the street from the station that we're talking about today. For about a year, year and a half, where we have them back now. And then in 2002, we leased, we signed a long-term lease for eight acres of land up at the oral school site on the Groton side. So we moved both trailers up there. I had a storage trailer up there. And we used that site until 2022. So we had a 20-year run up there. It was a perfect site for what we wanted to do for training, kind of off the beaten path. We trained a lot of, we've trained over probably 3,000 firefighters at that site. In 2022, the state decided they were going to sell the property. So I had, at the time, about a $4.5 million grant lined up from the state of Connecticut to really kick that eight acres up and make like a regional fire school. Well, long story short, the town of Groton basically said, "You're not going to sell the property if you have a training academy next door to it." So we had our long-term lease terminated. And we were told in no uncertain terms officially that we needed to vacate the premises with our equipment. With that, we had pretty much no option but to place them down across from the station we have right now. So at the, we went out to bid and at the tune of $20,000 to move two trailers three miles down the road, we did what we did. Before we made that move, I sent letters out to all the neighbors in the neighborhood, not just the adjoining property owners. I went over and visited the planning department in the town of Stonington and basically said, "Look, what do I got to do to place them down there? What are my setbacks, et cetera?" They were, they were very, very good. I was told what I had to do. Unfortunately, one of the regulations got overlooked. So when we placed the two trailers on the site, I, I put it three times the amount that I was told on the backside, twice the amount on the side setback. And later on, they found that a regulation that was overlooked. So my back offset is two feet off from being what it's supposed to be. So when we put them down there, they were originally on trailers. They're eight-foot wide by 40-foot long. They look like a tractor trailer that goes down the highway on 95. So they had like the double axles underneath them, et cetera. When we moved them down across from the station, it's not in an area that's out of the way. We have neighbors. We've worked very well with the neighbors since 1961. I try to keep a very good relationship with everybody. So we chose to take the trailers out from underneath them to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So we dropped them down on blocks. We plan on painting them and cleaning them up. So we worked with the neighbors on issues since I, 20 days from now, I've been chief for 30 years. And through the 30 years, I've always worked very well with the neighbors. I had three neighbors get ahold of me. I met with all three of them. Two of them were satisfied with what I told them and what we would do. I told them we'd get them painted. The south exposure, one of the neighbors on Smith Street was concerned about seeing them right out of his backyard. I told him that we would get the landscaping people in, would clear that. If you go by the site, the south side of it's really, it's just overgrown. It's got overgrown trees. The house right on the corner of Smith Street is owned by the Methodist Church. Their bushes are like taking over about 20 feet of their yard. We, I told them we'd clean it out, we'd put some giant green aravivites over there, and that concern went away. The other individual that got ahold of me, we had, was concerned about smoke. I told him that we'd notify roughly five days ahead before we did any kind of live burn. The live burn trailer is probably going to be the least used on the site. The one that's going to be used the most is the technical rescue training trailer. So those concerns were pretty much put to bed. A third person called me today, concerned about it being in a residential area, et cetera. We had a very cordial, nice conversation. I explained to her that, as always, we'd work with her and try to take care of her concerns. So, I mean, we parted on very good terms, no screaming and yelling. So basically, that's where we are right now. I had a perfect site, got kicked out of it by the state. We had no other option at the time. I tried to do the right thing, you know, go into the neighbors before we moved it, go into the planning department before we moved it, working as I always have with the neighbors. So that's pretty much where we are right now. I was told I needed a special use permit. No promises, but my hope would be in the future, finding a site more suitable for them. And, you know, purchasing a piece of property, leasing a piece of property, et cetera. But right now, for the, for the immediate timeframe, I had no other choice but to do what we did. I think we did it the right way. I think we, we went about it and put all of our ducks in order before we did it. So I'm hoping we get, get some support. And like I said, I think long-term, we'll definitely be looking at somewhere else to put them. But for right now, we don't have any other choice.
Any questions?
Chief, could you describe the kind of training you do in these trailers?
One of the trailer is what they call a live burn trailer. We do a lot in that. But the main purpose of that trailer, that was the one that we originally had at this site for about a year and a half before we moved it to oral school. Basically, we take clean wood pallets, clean straw, and clean plywood. We have to go by NFPA 1403, which is the national standard for live fire training. We light a fire in it. We have a vent on the top. As long as we keep the fire burning hot, the first one we get, we get a little bit of smoke that might, you know, linger off property. But once we get it going, the smoke and the heat goes straight up in the air. It usually goes quite a ways up, 100, 150 feet. And it, you know, so it doesn't really affect the immediate area. We also use that trailer for some ladder training, some search inside. But the main trailer we use more than the live burn trailer is called the technical rescue trailer. We use that for ladder work. We use it for rope work, rappelling, ascending, taking patients off the top floor. We can set up a full maze inside of that building where we can use fake smoke, theatrical smoke, and send a firefighter through. We can put a rescue, a rescue mannequin in there, have the firefighters go in, find it, bring it out. Also on top of, we have the large training trailer, a training tower on top. We also have a tube that goes all the way down approximately 25 feet. We can use that for confined space. We have another confined space prop on top of the trailer that we can use for confined space. So it's a multi-use trailer mainly for rescue and search and rescue.
Would you be using fire suppression chemicals?
No. We can't use, the AFF foam has been outlawed. We don't even use it anymore. We don't carry it on our apparatus. Anything we'd use over there would be straight water or what we call compressed air foam. Both of our engines have compressed air foam systems. And that's a Class A foam, which is, it's like an industrial laundry detergent.
But where I'm going with this is, as I recall, not long ago, we had a real controversy about building on Smith Street because of marshes, marsh and wetlands and whatnot. And so I'm wondering about the dangers of having fire training near, near the wetlands and near the marshes.
Yeah, we don't use anything that would be considered dangerous to the environment as far as, you know, water or any kind of chemical, et cetera. We also use that site, and we've been using the site for a long time. We, we, all these trailers, the two trailers I'm talking about, and we have some car fire prop, a propane fire prop. We have like five different props. We got all of these from FEMA grants. We applied for federal grants and received them. So the two trailers that are currently sitting there now, it's about $400,000 worth of equipment there. And we got it for 5% of that through a FEMA grant, so.
And I would assume the amount of water you use is minimal.
Oh, yeah. Most, most live burns, even if we do say 10, we actually light the fire room off 10 times. We use less than 1,000 gallons of water.
So it doesn't create a lot of runoff?
No, the runoff is very minimal.
Stays on site?
Correct. The site, the site has like a park on one end. It's grass. We maintain it with a gazebo there. And then where we do the training is actually like gravel and crushed rock. And then in the front, the parking area, is Millings from the street. When they did the, when they resurfaced Main Street and North Stonington Road, I went out there and made a deal with the contractor to put like seven triaxalos in the parking lot. And then they spread it out for us and kind of compacted it for us about 15 years ago.
How often do you have, do you use the training facilities and specifically the live fires?
The live fire training, we probably use it six times a year. Eight at the, at the far end. The technical rescue training trailer and the car fire propping, et cetera. The technical rescue training trailer in the car fire propping, et cetera, we used to use, use it regularly up at the oral school. So I would say at least three Monday nights of the month, we utilize that parking area now for training since we can't use the oral school. So I would say probably three, three Monday nights and then some Tuesday mornings, cause we have Monday night training and then we also have a Tuesday morning training for the volunteers that work second shift and third shift. And a handful of weekends, I would say out of fifty-two weekends, maybe if we're lucky, eight to ten weekends out of the, and that's stretching it for that. If we have like a, a special, like a firefighter one program going on, that's a certification class, the entry level certification class for our volunteers. If we have a firefighter one class, that usually meets like two nights a week, like a Tuesday, Thursday and and an all-day Saturday for like eight weeks. But not all of that is, there'd be one of those nights that would be, or that probably the sad day that would be a live burn day where they'd actually burn in the burn trailer.
Okay. And then just one other question. Um, since this really is not your long-term plan, if you were granted a special permit and there was a time limitation on that, what would that time limitation, what would you like that to be?
Kinda difficult. I mean, in a perfect world, I'd love to be able to, to, you know, get something that would suit our needs within five to eight years, but I can't guarantee that. I mean, like, we're looking at a piece of property right now on the Groton side off of Wells Road. It's owned by the town of Groton. Um, it would be a, a really good site, um, but we'd have to, we asked them to use that, um, like eight months ago when we were told to get out. They were said they were in negotiations of possibly selling it to the, um, indoor tennis um, place right there on Wells Road. And I heard that fell through, but I haven't, I haven't gone back, you know, I last six months, I just been trying to work on getting, getting off the state site because it got to the point where I was pretty much being told either we move them or they're gonna come confiscate them and take them. So we were like, we were under the gun. I mean, for us to spend tw- twenty thousand dollars to move them three miles down the road, that was a pretty big hit for us, uh, you know, un- unexpected expenditure, so.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question, just, um, the hours of operation. You mentioned you have nights. I mean, is there a cutoff time during the night?
Yeah, we usually, we usually try to have our training done at the latest by nine, nine-thirty at night. We usually start at six-thirty. Um, in the project description, I, I, I think I did that, but yeah, our normal Monday night would be start at six-thirty. Most of the time we're done by eight-thirty, nine o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, just a point. Um, I went through firefighter training and, uh, wow, it was, it was incredibly scary at Chinute Air Force Base. Uh, it was a requirement to be a, a base civil engineer, to be a, a trained firefighter and actually wear the badge. And I was not prepared for it, but one of the most unnatural things that I've ever done in my life, that I've lived for a few years, is to walk into a jet fuel fire.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's nothing that you can do without being trained for it. Uh, so facilities like this, as much as they're difficult to sight and as difficult as they are to look at it, are necessary facilities because you can't train anybody anyway, except to put the bunker gear on and send them into the room with proper training. So I see this as, as essential and, uh, and and I support it a hundred percent.
It, it is essential and I appreciate that, but I also, I also have, um, I joined in seventy-six when I was fourteen years old, so most of the immediate neighbors, not most, but quite a few of them have known me since I was a lot younger than I am right now. And, um, I, I, I do have a concern for the neighbors and we, we try to, we try to address them on a regular basis, so.
You made, you made that point and, and I think that, that you made it, uh, extremely well and, and that's why I have so much confidence that if, if we do continue to allow this, you'll do your best to make sure that, that you mitigate, uh, the impacts of the facility. I thank you for that.
I have a question. So the wheels are off the trailers now. There's no axles?
Yes, sir.
Is that area prone to flooding?
Hmm.
Meaning the bridge washed out not far?
Yeah, but we've, the, the water for the bridge never made it up to the parking lot.
Okay.
I mean, we have a, we have a, um, we have a dip in the parking lot. So if we get heavy rain, we'll get a puddle that's like an inch and a half, two inches deep, but it's usually gone the next day.
So you wouldn't be concerned with some major?
Looks like the elevation is seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that is generally higher than thirteen or fourteen where, where you get flooding and, and almost all the flood zones in our town are somewhere between ten and thirteen.
Well, that bridge washed out, believe me.
I know. That is not lost.
And I didn't know if you had like a contingency plan to get those things out of there, but at twenty grand to move them, I don't think you do.
Well, I mean, if we had to move them quickly, um, I have a way to move them quickly. Um, I've already made those arrangements.
I don't need to know anymore. I don't need to know anymore. Any other questions?
What's the average number of people out of ten to training that do a training? Is there?
Our average number for us on a Monday night is, is right around twenty.
Wow, yeah.
And then Tuesday morning, probably ten to twelve.
I, I just wanna say thank you for your dedication. You you're great. I mean, you do a lot for the town, so thank you.
No, I, I, I've, I've lived in Old Mystic all my life, so I, I have, I was brought up right. I, I'm, I'm sixty-one years old and I was always taught you help other people and you, and you take care of your, your neighbors and your friends, so I, I live by that.
Now, walking into a fire is helping to an extreme. So thank you for your service.
You did JP four?
JP four, yeah, and JP eight.
Yep.
It was incre- I mean, I can say after having done a lot of scary things in my life, uh, by far, the most intimidating thing I've ever done in my life and most unnatural thing I've ever done in my life is to walk into a jet fuel fire.
Are there any comments from the public that'd like to speak? Do you have your name and address?
My name is Mitch Bavarnik, uh, of the seventh Smith Street, Old Mystic. Uh, so first off, I just wanna say I'm not here to argue with the chief, uh, or the fire department, um, that, you know, works really hard for our community. Um, I just wanna come up with a plan that is more concrete, um, than uh, we'll do our best with a fence or we'll do our best with some trees. The size of these trailers, the eight by forty, that's massive. These are huge containers and then they're double, that, you know, they're, they're, they're stacked on top of each other, so they're really high. On top of the fact that the lot is probably five or six feet above my backyard. So my, my lot, I'm directly behind their lot, so I'm the most affected out of anybody. Um, and, you know, my biggest concern besides seeing it every day, it looks like a construction zone, um, you know, these are giant metal containers. Um, you know, it just looks, you know, it looks like an industrial construction zone in a residential neighborhood. Um, now I've been watching these, you know, evolutions and trainings over the last eight years. It's awesome and I'm all for it. And, you know, they have a couple of regular car trailers there. Uh, they bring in the burn car trailer after that. It's all cleaned up nice and neat and it's basically an empty lot and that's been great for the last, you know, seven years and change. Um, and then all of a sudden, these, you know, fighter, these fighter fighting, uh, training facilities, you know, showed up one day, uh, really without much notification to us. And I understand the circumstances, you know, that's tough. Um, I find it hard to believe that there's not a single one at the place in town that's more industrial that could have gone. Um, yeah, maybe the, you know, the dump has a giant lot. Um, there's a huge lot at the transfer station, uh, by, uh, Fitch High School. Um, you know, they could have gone there. Uh, and then so, yeah. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I just want something more concrete, especially if you guys are gonna sign a special use permit for five to eight years. Um, you know, some, something with, uh, you know, more of a specific entity, um, that's hopefully look closer or something that really, you know, prevents our neighborhood from seeing our property values going down because of this. Uh, there is gonna be a huge effect on that. I know there's a lot of rentals on our street. Um, you know, it's hard to rent a tenant, you know, really nice upscale place and a really beautiful part of Mystic. And you have this, you know, giant, you know, uh, container, you know, behind it. The backyard really takes away from the scenery and everything else.
Well, the, the chief mentioned some landscaping. Is that, would that help impact your situation?
It would need to be a lot of landscaping. I mean, you're talking full ground trees, you know, that are twenty or thirty feet high to hide, you know, these, these, these.
What about a berm with planting on top of a berm? Would it, would that mess up drainage?
Shouldn't be around the drainage. The problem's the height. I mean,
Yeah.
You know, twenty feet's a lot. Um, and I was on wait, you know, four years or.
Not, not if you're planting like giant arborvitae, uh, you know, that, that could do it. Like the kind they have them right next to, uh, uh, Dog Watch barbecue. Those, those things were uh, fifteen feet high when they planted. Uh, uh, you know, there, there are species of trees that could serve as a buffer. Would that be satisfactory?
Yeah, uh, yeah, if it completely, you know, from ground level on my backyard, it completely hides the trailers, yes.
Okay. Chief, what about, what about, uh, a plan that, that shows us something like that? As a, as a stipulation of the approval?
Well, my plan was, is to get the landscaping company in there that we use a use and actually have the neighbors there when we meet with the landscaping company. The original plan that we, that the landscaping company recommended to me was exactly what you just said.
Yeah.
Giant green arborvitae.
The giant arborvitae are, are very expensive. That's why they use them and, and just like the ones next to Dog Watch.
Yeah.
That would do it. That would do it. It's a hundred percent screening.
Eight foot and they said every year they're gonna grow anywhere from two to three.
No, not eight feet. Not eight feet. These, these, these are the giant arborvitae.
Right.
They go, they go in the ground and they're like fifteen feet tall when they go in the ground. And in a couple of years, they're twenty feet tall.
We're open to whatever. I mean, we're, we, we're not closing the door to anything. We're, we're open to.
So that stipulation, that stipulation would not be a showstopper for you?
No, I just have to go back to the district with the documentation from your group and, and just get the money approved to do it.
Okay.
And, and you? I do think you would need a berm. You'd need to plant the trees on a berm.
That would, that would help a lot too, I think. I think the, the berm would, would create a, a different profile, you know, and it would separate the horizon.
Like a three foot, two, what do you think? What height?
Like two or three feet.
Yeah, three feet.
Two or three feet.
We couldn't do much more than two or three feet because it would start infringing on, on getting around trailers. I, I think, I think the giant green arborvitae would be a heck of a lot better looking than what's there now. Because it is just the.
They're very ni- they're actually very nice looking.
Yeah, where your neighbor is, I mean, there lives a twenty feet of their, their lawn, just by those overgrown evergreen.
I, I'm not trying to sell Dog Watch, but the, the, uh, the trees that they use there next to Dog Watch, um, they had some left over and I bought a few of them. And they were, they sold them to me for like three hundred and seventy-five dollars a piece, so they're not that expensive. Uh, you know, you can buy a trailer load of them and, and fix that problem with a really nice, uh, visual barrier, uh, buffer. Uh, so if you're amenable to that and that sounds good to you, it would be a stipulation and any approval that we might consider.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add is that, uh, you know, this special use permit, you know, really, it's a little late. You know, these trailers have already been there for almost a year probably. And I don't know when they got there.
They've been there for about five months.
Okay. Um, so they've already been there for a while. I don't know if we can put it like a hard time requirement?
I don't think you can put a timeframe on a special permit. I was once told it's illegal.
No, not for, not for the, how long they have to be there, but just for some kind of, uh, uh, protection between my property and theirs.
For the actual berm.
Oh, for the berm?
Yeah.
For things to start, uh, like, you know, an extra time requirement.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if it's a stipulation, the berm has to be there for the, in perpetuity until.
But they're already there. But they're already there.
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah. I, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Well, you'd probably do it in the fall, do the planting.
Yeah.
Six months.
Late summer.
That's fine. Okay.
You, you shouldn't plant now.
No, you can't. You have to wait till the fall.
Yeah, so six months, within six months to have, to put that berm on the plant.
And that would give us time to clear that sightline off, stump it, get the berm in there and then in the fall, we drop the trees.
Figure out where the property lines are.
It's been surveyed.
It has been surveyed.
Yeah, I had.
Yeah, I saw the bearings on the plant, so it looked like.
We had to survey it.
Okay.
I, I don't know that. I guess that is a question. Can you put a time stipulation on a special use permit? I think we have done that in the past.
I really wouldn't recommend it. I don't think it's gonna hold up in Connecticut land use law. To have it as a special, you know, to have a special permit is supposed to really, you know, run with that use.
Uh huh.
So at the termination of the use, you might be able to revisit it if they stopped, like if it stopped being a fire department overall, then you might be able to go back and revisit that. Um, but I, I wouldn't recommend you stipulating it in that way. I don't think you're gonna be on the right side of the line.
We could stipulate for fire training.
In another jurisdiction, the town attorney ruled that you cannot put a duration on a special permit.
We could say for fire training only.
You could do that as a use. You could definitely do that.
Sure, you can use, you can say for fire training only as a use.
If they do sell a property and move.
But I think that's what.
It's a continuation of the current use.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it's already being used for, isn't it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, I, and I do understand the, the, um, the neighbor's comment. Um, I also understand how important the training is, so it's, it's like one of those, but I mean, you are looking for another spot and it's as you, I've, you know, if you were to put the investment in for the landscaping, that would not prevent you or deter you from looking for another spot. Yeah. You would think something in the town of Stonington you could find.
Well, the, the problem.
Not have to go to Groton.
Well, no, the, the, the problem is, is to, for the training facility to be to be utilized for us, it's gotta be in our fire district. I can't be sending, you know, ninety percent of my fire department to the town dump and then get a fire back in Old Mystic and I got everybody over at the town dump.
Ah, yeah, okay.
It needs to be within our twenty-six square.
That makes me feel good. Yeah, okay, okay.
Any other comments from the public? Come on, yeah, may I have your name?
Hi, uh, my name is Jeffrey Wood. I'm at thirty-two North Stonington Road. Um, I'm also on the property, uh, behind where the car parking.
I'm sorry, could you use the microphone? We seem to be.
Thank you. My name's Jeffrey Wood. I'm at thirty-two North Stonington Road. Um, my property is behind the car parking lot where the trailers are currently. Uh, so we have to go significant border with the car parking lot as well. We're more north of, uh, the current neighbor here. Um, so just before we get going, there's been no photos or images of the trailers being shown, so I have some here for the members to look at. Cause they are significantly, they are very large. And so I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to them. So I might submit these as part of the question. Um, so they're not really trailers. They're shipping crates as well, just to point that out. Um, and another thing I wanna set straight is uh, in the introduction, Ken mentioned that he talked to all the neighbors and sent letters out. I, I received the letter that they were coming after they arrived. Another thing I'd like to set straight is, uh, they were used. The, the, the open burning were used without a permit, as far as I understand. And we got significant amounts of smoke on our property. Such a, uh, my other neighbor called nine-one-one because they didn't know what was going on. So I wanna point out that they were used without permitting. Um, and so my concern is not just the fact that you need significant, significant tree cover just to, uh, cover them, but there's a significant amount of smoke that is generated by these facilities. And it's a significant escalation to the amount of training that's already currently been done on that property. Um, they've been there for five months. Uh, they're two stories tall. There is a ladder that goes from the lot up two stories and there's no protection against my children who are five and eight, who could just climb up there, um, without any effort because it's completely open. And so I have significant safety concerns for the open burning and the smoke that's generated. Um, and the lot itself is, I don't think it's appropriately sized for those large shipping containers. Um, apart from the other things the neighbor here also mentioned in terms of the. of the size. To plant aboratives there, it would have to go all the way around, um, where the gazebo is, and that would be, you know, a hundred feet of aboratives to cover it. It's not a small part of the road that you'd have to cover to hide or, or shield these, uh, shipping crates. So I have really significant concerns, um, for the use of this area in a permanent fashion for that smoke training, when there's already significant training that's happening there. And we've never really talked to Ken about any problems associated with that. We support the training that's been happening there. The previous owner of the house, um, did not support it. There was significant discussion and argument with the firehouse over it. We've not said anything in the last eight years, but I feel like this is, uh, a rather large escalation with no notification and, uh, no consultation with the neighbors whatsoever. So thank you, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, please.
My name is Len Peta and I live at thirty-four North Stonington Road.
Len?
Len Peta, P-E-T-A is the last name. And I'm not gonna tell you how long I've been a friend of Ken's. I will tell you this though, um, before we moved to thirty-four North Stonington Road, we lived, uh, four or five blocks down the street from it. And, um, it was a rental house that we bought, hoping that someday we would move there ourselves. And we did. Unfortunately, having a new furnace put in for the tenants that were living there, the house caught on fire. And I'm not proud to say that my picture, Ken was just made chief, and my picture of my house on fire is still in his office.
No, it's not there anymore.
Not there anymore, okay.
No.
So anyway, um, my concern's a little different, um, than everybody else's. I, I guess a, a lot of you have not seen pictures of the, of the, uh, the tower. I, I haven't seen one, which I have. Does he have this one here? Yeah, okay, there it is right there. So you can, you can get, I've got a couple of them here. So you can, you can get an idea of just how tall this is. My concern is that it, there's many children in our neighborhood and it seems like it's increasing all the time. And, um, I understand about the trees, doing all the screening and all that. I'm concerned about, you can see how tall that is, um, and as the ladder goes up the side and then there they can go up another level up there, I'm worried that some kid is gonna get up there and fall down and, and perhaps die. And so, um, my question basically is to Ken, is there any way you can do anything about that ladder, the, the steps?
We're, uh, to be perfectly honest with you.
Yeah.
We never even thought about that.
Yeah.
Um, since, I'm sorry.
Jeff, Jeff.
Jeff.
Yeah.
Since Jeff brought it up tonight, I just made a note, that will be addressed first thing tomorrow morning.
Why couldn't it be treated like a swimming pool as an attractive nuisance, as they call it, and put a fence around?
One of my, my captain, my volunteer captain, his job is a consultant, he does all safety consulting and everything, so he's right up on all that. So I'll be calling him first thing tomorrow morning and, uh, that will be addressed ASAP.
Okay.
That safety and, and thank you for bringing it up.
If I was a seven-year-old boy living next door, I'd be climbing that ladder pretty quickly.
Yeah, me too. I'd be using it as a playhouse. Okay. Yeah, I'll address that issue that both of them brought up first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
What about the smoke?
Uh, the, the smoke is a, is an issue. I wasn't there for it. But I'm more concerned about, I have a granddaughter and a grandson, and you know, you, you take a boy who's ten or eleven and there's that, steps going up and that big railing, and then they can go up another level, you know? That, I, at first I thought a fence, but then I said, no, maybe just get rid of the, the staircase. If it can, if it can be taken off and then put back on when you're gonna train, that would solve that whole problem there.
Put a lock gate on it, I mean, there's ways to.
Yeah, we'll. A lock gate or something, so.
Yeah, we'll figure something out. I'll, like I said, I'll have Ben get on it first thing, I'll call him first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so looking at the pictures, um, which were very helpful, thank you. Could you point out, cause I saw a house, I mean, um, the picture and then I could see the house. The red, it's red, your house, your home?
Yellow, green.
No, the red one's across the street.
Oh, no, it was the other set of pictures, I think Clifton has them. Anyways, um, where the brushes that you were talking about, because.
So that's twenty, that's twenty feet away from my. Yeah, you might be looking at my barn that's in the back, right in the line.
Oh, okay, all right. Because it's a, it's a big, that's a big space. And I just have to say, you take twenty feet of brush out and even if you put a fifteen foot tree, it, the width is not, you know, just, just make sure you understand, right? What you're, what you're saying, cause, yeah. Yeah, so here's, here's your picture. And what about this yellow truck?
That yellow truck was used in a training exercise about seven years ago and it's never been removed.
Okay. So all that brush, is that the brush you're talking about? I'm, I'm pointing to where the yellow truck is.
Yeah, my, my house is more on the right side of this truck, ran behind the truck.
Mm-hmm.
But it's only about twenty feet space that, apparently, it's not a lot of space.
So the brush really is just brush, like a couple of feet tall? It's not, it's not significantly, um, like a.
So what are you saying?
But most of those trees are on my property, all those fires, the maple's are on my.
Oh?
I missed that, sir. Could you use the microphone or repeat that?
I think what I was trying to point out is two things. Once I saw the pictures and understanding that those oaks are on, on the neighbor's property, that is very close.
Yeah, it's about twenty feet away from my line, I took a tape measure today and it.
Exactly.
Yeah, and it's, all, all those oaks, maples that are on my property.
Right, and that, one of the solutions that we, you know, have been discussing is that you would clean up the brush to make it look neater, it's not going to help, actually it's going to make it worse, the situation for the neighbors that are concerned about the vi, visual. It's not gonna help anything, actually, from a visual or smoke perspective.
I'm understanding you're, you would be putting a berm and arboridies around that.
Are you talking about the street side or the property side?
Property side was my understanding.
No, there's, there's no, there's no room for that on the property side at all, where they currently are located. And then the trees would be, have to be on the street, which is, you know, about seventy feet away and would have to surround the entire parking lot.
So there's nothing that you could put between his property and yours? That, that?
Yes.
Okay, how about his, though? I think that's a concern.
It's the backside.
Okay.
Right. The, the backside of the trailer, the far, um, northern corner of the trailer is, according to GIS and measurements, is thirty-three point five feet off property.
Agrees with the survey.
And that's, that's included in the report too?
Cause originally when I went to planning, they told me I had to be ten feet off his property line and twenty off the, the southern corner. And we went, we went thirty and forty.
Yeah, it would've, it would've been, it would've been, it would've been thirty and, or forty and ten. And so you did forty on the rear and then thirty-three on the side. Um, but because it's adjacent to a residential use, the bump up is to thirty-five feet from a residential use. So the thirty-three point one is two feet short.
Right.
On, on the sight plane that was presented.
And we didn't, we, I was going on the original, I was told, I think ten and twenty. So we like tripled ten and doubled twenty. I didn't like it, that close to the end, so we made it bigger.
You're in the RA twenty. I'm assuming what probably went on is that, you know, as it was examined more closely, it was discovered about, that it wasn't just residential to residential in terms of use and maybe that it was first looked at that way. It's my only thought.
Uh, yes, is there anything magical about where they are, the site right now? Could you prepare a different site plan and maybe set them, pull them further into the site, further away from the property lines to give you a greater distance from really everybody, all the, whatever?
We could, we could move some, but if we move them too much, you're gonna, you're gonna take away all of the parking area.
Oh, okay.
We tried to kinda put them off in the corner to maintain the parking area up front.
Parking area for the firefighters coming for training?
It's, uh, the parking lot is used for, like, if there's a function at the fire station, people park there, like, if somebody has like a, a birthday party or something, there's parking there for, and some of the neighbors park their cars there occasionally when they have, like, if they have a party with the neighbors, we don't, we let them use the parking lot to park and everything. So.
Yeah.
Parking area up front, and then we have like the, like, grass area and then training area over to the other side.
I'm, I'm almost thinking like you have to give up the parking. I think, I, I think Chuck's idea of reciting these to give more space, even if you lose parking for, um, a party or something, might be necessary.
My concern could be as the further you pull them out front, the more noise they're gonna be from the street. You know, the closer you get them to, to North Stonington Road, we're kinda trying to tuck them away and not have them right smack in the middle of the parking.
Chief, when your firefighters come in in an emergency to come and jump into your apparatus, where do they tend to park? Are they parking in those spaces? They're parking across the street?
Not in this area, across the street.
Okay, I didn't know if it was the same.
In front of the firehouse. We have like eight spots in front of the station, they park over there. On Monday nights when we have training, we usually park the apparatus across the street where these trailers are and the volunteers will, the overflow will park over there.
Clifton, do you have a input?
Do we have input? Additionally, because it's a special use permit, um, Chief has requested a few waivers from the relevant sections to not provide certain, uh, studies or analyses, um, which I think are sufficient. One of the things that I noticed later in this process, and again, I'm coming in, you know, three quarters of the way through the review process, so I'm coming in super late. Um, I did notice that the southern portion of the property is specifically a corner where the, um, the training boxes are located, is located within the CAM zone, um, which would typically mean that this would also require CAM application. Um, so I did put that in this report just for everybody's reference. I would say that, uh, Gail, um, did, uh, correct me a little bit or, uh, provide, you know, a backup, um, that this would be consi, potentially considered an exempted activity, um, requiring a CAM application under seven-three-eight-one, stating minor additions to or modifications of existing buildings or detached accessory buildings such as garages or utility sheds would be exempt from CAM application. This is a continuation of a sort of existing use anyways, and these theoretically would be considered accessory buildings. Um, so I would leave that up to the commission to make that determination before. I make that determination, um, but just so when you see in the stipulations of the report, um, the coastal area management portion, um, potentially consider that exempt when making your decision as well. Other than that, I really did, I really don't have any comments apart from, um, the other item that was mentioned both here tonight regarding the public outreach piece, um, that was included as a stipulation to have an updated impact statement to describe the method of public outreach to abutting property owners ahead of training exercises. That would include, um, both how and when and how early in advance, um, getting that kind of written down so at least, you know, every one of the abutting property owners or neighbors would know when these training exercises would happen, um, would be sufficient to meet that need. And that's something that Candy also brought up in her notes. Um, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
I will say also in addition, um, I did receive, uh, two phone calls, uh, today, actually in opposition to this. Um, I don't know if they were, um, the same individuals Chief talked to today, but it might be, um, but they was, they were mentioning the smoke and potential light pollution of, specifically for the night exercises with the floodlights coming down. And then secondly, the, um, adjacency to the residential uses were also mentioned, so they're just supporting exist, what's been, uh, shared tonight by the residents. So I wanna add that too.
Um, do I hear a motion to close the hearing? Or a further discussion?
Can I just ask one other question? Cause it might be a brilliant thought.
How about it?
Did you go to the town and ask them about the old, um, the Old Mystic School parking lot?
Yes, we did. We, we had plans to move a lot up to the old school administration building. We were gonna put the training trailers to the rear of it and there was one adjoining, um, homeowner that absolutely went to the building. And I kinda fell through the cracks because he was, that individual was making so much possible. The town actually came to us and asked us if we'd be interested in that piece of property and we were seriously looking at it and we're gonna put all the training stuff to that, which you'd be able, it's got a, a natural berm out there. Now, if you see it from one eight four.
Yeah.
You wouldn't see it from North Stonington Road. And one of the neigh, two of the neighbors absolutely like, made it very perfectly clear that they would oppose it with lawyers and everything, so we kinda backed right off after that. We weren't, we weren't, we didn't have the appetite for a fight.
Okay, that's, yep.
Before we close a public hearing, do we, do you think it'd be worthwhile to hold this over and ask for some of these issues to be addressed, the landscaping and that sort of thing, uh, rather than just let it, let it go at this stage?
I, I was inclined to keep it open to get more information, yeah.
So. I would agree with that. I think that makes sense.
So what would we, like a landscape drawing? What do you?
I would like to think. A sight plan. A sight plan that addresses the issues, uh, to the extent that you can, uh, and make better use of the site. And I would also, if we can, that the safety aspect, I think should be taken care of immediately. No question. So I don't know if that's, if we can require a submission within twenty-four hours or whatever, of what they are going to do and when they will do it to make that safe. Cause that's like an imminent concern, I think.
Yeah.
The proposal is to not close the public hearing.
Continue it.
And to continue it.
Continue it.
Yes.
I second that.
And, you know, we'll have to figure out a schedule. It might be into July, but, um, it probably would be in July, the one meeting we have. So a, a sight plan including.
Will, will we continue the public hearing and that, uh, the applicant, uh, prepare a sight plan, uh, that addresses the issues, uh, the layout issues, uh, that were addressed, uh, that were raised this evening with regard to buffering, uh, regard to the location of the trailers, visual obstruction, uh, and that the safety issue be addressed immediately.
Thank you, Chuck.
Second to none.
Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? I'll.
You gotta close the public hearing.
But with closed public hearing first then?
Gotta close the public hearing.
Oh, continue, continue.
Yeah, so continuing the public hearing means that when new, when new information is brought forward, the public has the chance and the commission has the chance to ask more questions, et cetera, just so people know.
New information that will be presented.
Versus closing it.
Is that all right? And the chief?
Yeah, will I, will I get that ready? Or exactly what you want?
Well, we're not gonna design it for you.
No, 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 no.
But, but essentially.
Will I get some form of a report saying, please submit a new plan with X, Y, Z on it?
You could call Clifton.
Yeah, I got that. I got you. I got you.
I just wanted to make sure I get your request.
Nope, no, great. I think the top ladder can help with that.
Yep. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Chuck.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor.
Aye.
Need to close.